So this is our pre meeting interview of three candidates for the commission. And first, we have Peter Havolt and attending is Councilman Way, Councilman Campbell, myself, Dave Paulson. And we will shortly get the car up and like they told us. And what we'll do is just go around, let each council member ask some questions and fairly informal, but we first of all, just want to thank you so much for showing up and for volunteering. It's really important mission and I talked to the chair who says, you know, everybody says we need some bad ones.
Great.
Going to do more. So if you may, just want to do a quick introduction.
Yeah, so Peter Havolt, I live on Olive Avenue, been a Marin resident for about 20 years. Been at Larkspur for approximately 10 years. My wife Cynthia and I purchased in Larkspur in 2012 and we're wealthy community. I was mentioned to this commission a few years ago by Todd and me. And I'm going to go back a few years in technology industry, he recommended that I search out the volunteer opportunities. And so I was interested when I got the email about a month ago from the city saying we're looking for some volunteers to help plan. Been very involved in the Larkspur community as a coach. So I'm forward to working here as a part of the career. Close friends with Bob Bosio, Bob is also probably aware, mayor over part of the year. So Bob and Todd and I have good friends and so I thought Bob's kind of a mentor to me. Thought it'd be a good idea to try to volunteer where I say in Larkspur. Yeah. Well, he's certainly. Yeah.
So we have general. General plan responsibilities that we can have that for years is the ultimate house. And you have requirement that houses from the state. Hasn't been this. From all spectrums of. How do you? It's gonna be hard to.
Well, I think as far as looking at what is certainly available assets that the city has. So for example, on Magnolia, I know there's the open shopping area, which to me would be a fine location for housing, given it's proximity to Magnolia. And and its access to transportation. I think looking at that as a substantial development would be, I don't know, a key area. So I'd want to look at the criteria of where does it have and where does it have proximity to transportation? Where does it have proximity to schools? I want to keep in mind, you know, certainly our schools are a lot. So I want to be cognizant of the impact to our school system and make the most decisions as well as the impact to infrastructure. But also keeping in mind that the city does have or the city does have the standing to look at available lots that are available. And also looking at secondary units, how do we make it easier for people and encourage second unit access?
I think, yeah, I think what we're going to see going forward is very creative.
Yeah.
One issue is.
No, absolutely. And I don't think there's a silver bullet. I don't come here with any explanation other than lots that are available. Easy access to transportation seems like. See what we can do on second unit development. We in fact have a site in our place, so. Worked out extremely well.
So. So. I think we all agree it would be great to encourage people to have secondary units. What ideas do you have or if you have a secondary unit? What was important to you in the decision to have a secondary unit that might?
We had a few secondary unit. So I think perhaps, you know, those ideas could be encouraging. Throw another idea there, encouraging improvements on, you know, perhaps there's. Type of tax incentives that could be offered for people to improve their second units. There could be. Ideas around. Sorry, I'm not just drawing a blank on your question. I think tax incentives could be an area improvement of development in that second unit. Perhaps. Making it easier for developers to propose second units within people's units. Offering ideas that the council could offer workshops on how people have created a second unit within their within their home.
One more question. I don't yet.
Well, I. Well, yeah, I mean, I mentioned my relationship with Todd and Bob, that, you know, it's called a service here. I went to a graduate university. It's all about, you know, giving back to the community and a lot of my education. I mentioned I was a coach. I do, I was participant when station area plan was proposed. At Larkspur Landing, I was very active in that. I just love the community and I want to make sure that it stays. Very small town feel in Larkspur. So I just love the area. We've been here for 20 years and I just like it. Long term, it's part of.
And then the big thing that happens is. How, how do you see the role? Maybe an applicant and then his neighbors. Right, navigate.
Well, I think I have to start with what what is allowed by the city, you know, what falls in the parameters and things that certainly fall outside, which certainly come under greater scrutiny. I would definitely take into consideration and neighbor feedback. I think is a key element of what goes into making sure that it's. It's within what the neighborhood feel is looking for. So I think figuring out what the parameters are of city allows. And then taking having a significant weight of neighbor input, I think is a critical element. So I would leave that very heavily. As a decision that I would make.
Yeah, so. Yeah, three questions. But very, very broadly.
Well, I think it's taking into your point, what is the, what is the requirement of? The city mandate for housing? What are the things that we can do to? Meet those requirements, but do it in a manner that keeps Larkspur the historical feel of the city as well as really making sure that our housing. Frankly, doesn't add to. Agree, climate change, but you know, trying to make housing so it's accessible to the transportation. That it really is seen as the bulk, the at the forefront of planning the city in an effective manner. And doing in a manner that really reduces admissions, makes it effective for people to get to their jobs, to their, to their school, wherever they're. And really, in a manner that is as the interest of Larkspur.
Yeah.
Or maybe just, can you ask a question? We just sort of went around the table.
Congratulations.
Is she all right?
That's awesome.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe. Well, Peter, thank you so much. And we're gonna basically just, you know, listen to the other two.
Sounds great. Okay. Well, thank you for your time. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. No, no, right. All right, thank you guys.
Well, congratulations. You got something?
Yeah. Almost to the bike stop.
You're welcome. And first of all, we want to thank you so much for showing up and for stepping up. Wanting to do this. So this is being pulled over for the council members that were coming tonight. Just kind of go around asking some questions, but.
Sure. So I'm Liam. I live over on South Wistia Drive, very version of Larkspur. I've been over there for about three years now. I'm a civil engineer. That's my profession. So I'm familiar with sort of the building and planning process. I'm involved in the, in the community here. I'm a member of the community garden over at Pepper Park. So we're in full harvesting mode right now. I've got tomatoes as many as you can use. I have more than I thought was possible, but.
Skinny bread.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff over there. Right now, I've just got vegetables in there. It is. Yeah, it's very, the care that. Yeah, so I, I have a nailer from the city of Larkspur saying you guys are willing to volunteer.
Probably might have been my question to Peter, but I was trying to.
Sure.
We have a lot of challenges. Levels of passion. Really one of the densest areas.
Correct.
Realize that. The question is always. Where do you see opportunities for?
Yeah, sure. So I think there's, there are some options presented that housing, you know, that I think is. Right now, but there are, there are a few lots or not lots, but you know, parcels that are available to develop and perhaps a higher density. Prison. By Larkspur Landing. There are also, I think, some opportunities in rural areas that could be legalized as a multiple use or type of development. That would also act. I, I think I would hesitate to. Change the downtown Larkspur and. From area to a dense area like the neighborhood that I live in. The feel of the neighborhood. Areas to. To add more housing. Some of the big ones.
He said to Peter. Take some challenging steps together.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think the first question was the same, like this, but at a very broad level.
I think the role of the planning commission at large is to act as kind of an oversight to the city. And also to make sure that any new developments that were to happen in Larkspur match with, you know, the character of the community that they're. So I think it's a, it's, it's a approval process, but but also a check on, on folks who want to. Move forward and have progress, but at the same time maintain. The feel of the city and the character of the city.
And then, I mean, the question I did get asked is more technical. Were you comfortable?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at, at my job, we don't always, we aren't always involved with the architectural portion of the. Project as engineers where my company that I work for, New Soils and Conventions, but where.
Opportunity. Expertise.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of different viewpoints that can. Yeah, I, I think I do feel comfortable with that in preparation for, you know, I was looking at what, you know, the missions roles in Larkspur where I, I watched some of the meetings that you guys have. Not relation, that adversarial relationship was apparent in some of the meetings. There were some cases where, you know, neighbors were friendly, but there were some cases where it didn't. Relationships there. So to answer your question, yeah, I think I do feel comfortable making decisions. Yes. Sure. Yeah. Well, I, I don't think there's a planning commission. We would have the authority to decide what state, whether we follow the state mandate or not. But I think that, I think that there are areas where. The city and the planning commission can, can. Prove developments in a manner that is consistent. Like I was saying, the character of the city. You know, to, to try and meet those mandates as best we can. Also. Well. An opportunity to meet the mandate. Yeah, sure. So I, I think one option would be to. Open up a new in some of these state parcels. Might have a different character than downtown Larkspur or this area. That's another, another option, like the last. Encourage people to have second units on their, on properties that wouldn't necessarily change, would increase density without changing the, you know, overall character. It is a challenge. I agree. You know, a challenging process. I, I think it depends on where the shopping center is. I mean, in, in Bonner, in particular, it's, it's a, I think it would depend on, on the project itself. Details of that. Six story, six story buildings or residential. So I think it would, it would really depend on the project, but. A concept, I think, that, yeah.
Question was, I thought, developments. What do you? Letters from other people that have different opinions, I can't decide whether it was kind of subjective. Question. How do you figure out?
Right. That's, that's a good question. Again, I think it would depend on, on the specifics of the project. But, you know, the, the building height, the building. You know, exterior. You know, the, the density of the building, which, which is in some levels governed by. But I, I think it's just taking of, of neighbors' opinions, homeowners' opinions and, you know, your own discretion to make, you know, making those calls. I'm not sure that there's a, oh, one answer that would, that would answer the question.
I'm just curious your way of thinking of how you, there is no right answer.
Sure.
I just wait to analyze.
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, taking all those factors and. Making decisions.
Well, yeah, thank you so much. Say that sometimes, but I think it's really. Yeah, just gonna, you know, pull this over.
If it doesn't work for this, please. If it doesn't work for this for whatever reason, please be involved. The one volunteer is very important. And obviously. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Your time is up. Yeah, yeah.
This is Maxwell.
So am I okay here?
Actually, yeah.
Hi, folks.
Hey, how's it going, Maxwell?
Doing great. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I'm so sorry. I'm not able to join in person. I had unfortunately already agreed to something in the city tonight, so I'm still at the office. But I hope, hope we can see each other around town some other time in person.
Yeah, no worries. We live in Zoom land, so we're very used to this. But anyway, we wanted to thank you so much for joining us and we have the four out of five council members here tonight. Scott, myself, Dave, Catherine and Kevin. And first of all, we just wanted to really thank you for taking interest and for putting in the application and we're excited to get to know a little more about you. And the way we structured it is, you know, just maybe you can just start off and tell us a little bit more, you know, we've read the application with. You know, give us, give us a little bit more about yourself or where you want to start and then we'll go around and ask a few questions.
Great. Yeah, I'm, I'm from Kentucky originally. Came out here to go to school at Stanford, did a undergrad in economics and then a master's degree in sustainability. From there, I started my career in investment banking and did some consulting work with some tech firms around the Bay. And I'm now back fully into investment banking and corporate advisory work. My wife and I moved to Larkspur in January of this year. We live over on Olive Avenue. It's, it's been a long time dream of ours to live here ever since we, we were cyclists in the city and drove through Madron. One day and literally my wife said the words, I want to live here someday. And so now that we live on Olive, we very much feel like, you know, a little bit like dream come true. And I would say, you know, the reason really why I'm here today is because, you know, we are a young couple in Larkspur. It's obviously price prohibitive for a lot of young couples to be here. So we feel very fortunate that we're, you know, able to be a part of this community. You know, I have a background in sustainability and economics, so I think I'm, you know, pretty good at making fact based decisions and doing that within, you know, an equitable, sustainable lens. And so I would like to, you know, be a resource to you guys and to the, to the city and, you know, try to do my best to make, you know, Larkspur continue to be such a great place to live. And, you know, usher in the next generation of people who went on a bike ride and, you know, said, I want to live there.
That's awesome. And Catherine was just saying, we've all gone through that moment like you where you just kind of say, I have to, which you're, I know I.
Yeah.
It's driving up the old railroad. Great. So Catherine, you want to start?
Sure. I don't know if you were listening to the conversation with our other two applicants, but I sort of, you've been in Larkspur for a short amount of time, but we have a lot of challenges ahead of us with building new housing. Not only are there state mandates, but it's really worth, we need to serve our community in a broader way that we have. So there'll be challenges to build a real complex variety of housing. And where do you see that fitting in to some of your ideas?
Yeah, I think, well, so I, I, I've been really interested in the concept of like population density. That's something that like I've, you know, I've done a lot of research, both personal and academic at one point on, you know, kind of sustainable infrastructure for housing. And I think that, you know, that is certainly something that would be, you know, better done, you know, around Marin. Both in terms of, you know, multi-unit, like multi-family units, trying to find ways to like incorporate those to both the downtown and the like, you know, surrounding areas in a way that doesn't compromise the sort of charm. And, you know, kind of uniqueness that Larkspur has, but also finding ways to better incentivize kind of secondary units, ADUs and things like that, that might allow for, you know, individuals who want to live here but might not have, you know, the money that it would require to like purchase a property to be able to still like share in that. So like for my wife and I actually have an ADU in our unit. And, you know, it's both part of the reason why we can afford to live here and luckily also part of the reason why, you know, we have two other under 30. You know, tenants who, who live in the bottom unit of our place. So I think part of it is, you know, at the planning level. So I think part of it is, you know, at the planning level, making space for, you know, I, I know that rent control is a part of the topic of conversation later tonight. You know, making space for that so that there are, you know, there is a possibility for low income people to live here. But also, you know, making it easier for people who already do live here, who would either, you know, appreciate the supplemental income or, you know, would like to be, you know, sort of a, you know, a shepherd in some ways for other people to be able to enjoy Larkspur to come and live.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question that came up in one of the candidates. Similar to you, they had made you, and the question was, what do you, helped you decide to have a new? What? What are your thoughts on things that would encourage other people to follow your footsteps? Creating you so that you could.
Let, let me try to restate that because I couldn't hear completely well. It, I, I, I think you said, what would you suggest doing that would incentivize other people who are younger to when to come to Larkspur? Is that, do I understand correctly?
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, it's much better.
Okay. So, so my question was, you, you have an ADU and the question is, what could we do to incentivize other property owners to create ADUs? So then we can have more economic diversity with some people that are living here. What was important to you in your decision to do it and what can we do to make it easier for other people?
Yeah. So I think, you know, number one, you know, reducing the amount of kind of red tape, so to speak, that a homeowner would have to go through to get something zoned for an ADU. So like my, I live at fifty-seven Olive. It is zoned as two separate spots. So for electrical, you know, there are two separate units and then the same thing goes for like wifi and things like that. So it's much less of a, you know, like when my wife and I were deciding to do it, you know, it was less of a, you know, how are we going to do this equitably? How are we going to like explain to someone that they're, you know, that this is actually like their space and not just, you know, a back room that we're trying to get extra money for type thing. So I think, you know, making it easier or incentivizing, you know, finding ways to incentivize people either through, you know, whether they can get some sort of a rebate if they are able to set up separate Wi-Fi's or, you know, separate electrical or things like that. I think that would be a great first step. But I think then, you know, separately, I, I really think there's kind of like, I've noticed at least on Olive, there's a really, really high presence of ADUs. And so as a result, we've gotten a lot of kind of tips and tricks basically from other people on the street in terms of like, you know, hey, what do you do for your renters? Or like, how do you think about, you know, creating a better, you know, a better environment for people who are coming and, and, you know, living in these ADUs? So I think maybe also, you know, out of the sort of like, you know, policy tax incentive perspective, there's also a, you know, there's kind of a community aspect to it too of bringing people who have, you know, who have ADUs together and then also bringing people who are interested so that they can share best practices around, you know, how to make it possible.
It's a great answer. Thank you.
Triggy, hear me, can you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, this, this has been a wonderful process, not just with you, but the other people who have shown up as applicants for this position. Because y'all look young. And I, it makes me feel old. But in any event, it's great to see fresh faces showing up and raising their hand for positions like this. I was a planning commissioner myself. That was my introduction to city government and it was a wonderful experience. So thank you. But I will ask the question that I, I often ask others is just to make sure fact that you, you, you know that there are multiple functions that members of the planning commission. One is, I think one that we tend, we always tend to focus on in these interviews with our policy issue in terms of developing and that's important when we're in the process of developing our housing element. But the meat and potatoes really of the planning commission is hearing disputes. People with permit applications that may, you know, approve or where planning commission has a role in making decisions about aspects of their permanent application. And in the context of those discussions may face opposition from neighbors. Like how I grew up in some of their neighbors' project or what other aspects there may be. Sometimes those proceedings can be contentious and sometimes even unpleasant.
Yeah.
How comfortable do you, would you feel playing the role as adjudicator in that?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, the, the short answer is I think I feel very comfortable in that. I think, you know, being an investment banker, we also do investing. I'm, you know, especially right now, I'm very, very familiar with giving news that people don't want to hear. Now, not that that's ever the goal, but I think really what, what, you know, what delivering harsh feedback or delivering tough news has taught me is how to be really fact-based, follow the fact pattern and to apply, you know, as much, as much kind of precision or, or even false precision to a certain extent to a situation to just be as kind of objective as I can be. So I think when it comes to like, you know, neighborly disputes, right? You know, the, there's the cut the baby solution and then there is, you know, what is the actual like right answer? There might not be a right answer. That's always, you know, extremely evident, but I think what I would try to do if I were a part of this, you know, commission is to really just, you know, try to go number one by precedent and what I could, you know, get smart on the issue because most issues I would imagine that you guys run across have you've seen in some way, shape or form before. So I'd like to study the precedent and be, you know, well-informed on what worked and what hasn't worked in the past. But more than that, you know, I think I'd like to apply, you know, an empathetic approach to both sides of the party. You know, both sides of the dispute, understand what it is that they really want and why, you know, certain situation, you know, certain compromises may be agreeable or not agreeable to them. But then after that, just apply a, you know, super like logical and objective framework for evaluating the decision and communicating that so that, you know, whether they agree with the decision or the opinion or not, they can at least understand the way that I got there and it doesn't necessarily feel like, you know, you know, just a picking side sort of argument. You know, I think a, a framework that I use to evaluate a lot of tough decisions comes from, you know, there's like a, there's a really common saying in sustainability, which is like, you know, sustainability is all about like solving for today's problems without compromising our ability for solving for the future's problems, right? And so I think when it comes to disputes like that, it's really, you know, you want to fix the illness, not just the symptom. And so I think applying that sort of kind of holistic lens to, you know, problem solving and difficult situations is, you know, at least treated me well thus far. I'm sure you guys can tell me all the ways I'm wrong because I'm sure after as many disputes as I'm sure you've heard, you can, you can point me in the right direction. But I'd say that's my entry framework.
Well, that's, that, that was a terrific answer and I appreciate that. And I will just reflect on your cut the baby comment. Because sometimes that's what you do.
Yeah.
And I hope you feel comfortable doing that when the time comes. That's just. Thank you for your response.
We, we've had to cut many babies given the macroeconomic.
Yes, well, no, I didn't have a baby. I had a.
Good, anything else?
I just wanted to circle back to say, Maxwell, thank you very much for stepping up here as a new resident, relatively new resident. We really, really need people with skills and intellect and passion to step forward. If we have a lot of applicants, so if it doesn't work out for you this time around, please stay active. We have a big project in the library community center that's coming up. It's just going to be right up your alley. Because there's going to be a lot of sustainability questions that are going to happen. Stay, stay involved.
Great. Yeah, absolutely.
And I, I, I think you answered, you know, pretty much any question. I was going to say, what, what's the role of the planning commissioner? I think you've done a great job and I just want to reflect back the, you know, sort of fact-based approach and the empathy, you know, kind of balancing head and heart. I think that's so key to public service and I, I really feel, I feel just, just excited that, that you're applying and as Catherine said, you know, just stay with it, you know, whatever happens. We, you know, it sounds like you want to be a part of this community and I came, you know, on a bike ride 10 years ago and here I am and become a part of this community. So, so keep it going. Um, I think that's it. So yeah, well, just thank you very much and we'll, we'll get back to you in a short time. And, uh, yeah, again, thank you so much for applying.
Yeah, I really appreciate your guys' time and once again, I apologize, I'm not there in person and, you know, hopefully we'll be seeing more of each other in one way.
We're used to this. Don't worry.
We don't have another meeting in August, so we won't be making a decision until September or are we going to have it earlier?
And how soon would that be?
So Maxwell, bottom line, we try to get back to you. We were normally doing the two weeks from now would be our next meeting, but we, we, you know, have had these two vacancies and really, really need some great people on, you know, to help with the planning commission. So.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your evening.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Today is August third, twenty twenty-two. It's six thirty and I wanted to call to order the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Our mayor, acting mayor Dan Hillmer is not able to attend. My name is Gabe Paulson and I'll, as vice mayor, run the meeting. Could we get a roll call, Shannon?
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
What? You're not on sound. Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Hara.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
I am here. Great, thank you. And this point in the meeting, we, as custom, like to do the pledge of allegiance. So we invite anybody to join us as we say our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is public comments and we invite members to speak to any item if it's, we want to limit comments to three minutes and the, and we don't want to discuss any items that are already on the agenda. And if possible, identify yourself and where you live. It's helpful for us. And anybody who's online, if you can silence your cell phones or mute your microphones while you're not speaking, that, that would help with the audio quality. So Shannon, do we have any, anybody who wants to make public comment?
I think we may have some folks in the audience. I see two raised hands that are joining the meeting virtually. Would you like to take the virtual public comment first?
Sure. And not seeing anybody in the room, let's start with them.
Okay. So the first person I'm going to call on and allowed to talk is Jim Burrows. You have your hand raised.
Welcome, Jim.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Thanks. Well, good evening, council members. I'm Jim Burrows. I'm a twenty-plus year resident of Larkspur and member of the Marine Conservation League. I'm here tonight to say a few words about consent calendar item number four point seven. The city's response to the twenty twenty-two grand jury report regarding the need for county-wide building electrification. I, I realize the staff recommendation is for further analysis and action on the grand jury's three recommendations. And I certainly support that. My plea tonight is that the city prioritize this matter for action in the next few months. For all the reasons detailed in the grand jury report and elsewhere. Moving to full-scale building electrification is a hugely important step in our collective efforts to combat climate change. I'm a retired environmental law attorney and worked mainly on big project development, including large campus infrastructure and residential development projects. Over the last fifteen to twenty years, climate change analysis became a dominating factor in all of these proposed projects pushed in large part by CEQA and NEPA review and mitigation obligations. But CEQA mitigation requirements have their limits, including the fact that by definition, they are an ad hoc treatment of environmental issues. And importantly, CEQA mostly addresses proposed new development, not existing development. What we need is a more systemic approach to combating greenhouse gas emissions from all sources. Adopting building electrification ordinances that create bright lines for developers and homeowners is an excellent example of how to do this right, at least with regard to the building sector. In particular, and as detailed in the Marine Conservation League letter that is part of your file, we need new city ordinances that do the following. One, require building electrification for all new buildings. Two, require building electrification for all proposed major building renovations. And three, to work with the county and other marine cities to develop a comprehensive plan for phasing out natural gas in all existing buildings, not just the ones subject to major renovations. Specific ideas for this suggested plan are listed in the Marine Conservation League letter. And most importantly, we need to do this now. Thank you. That's it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Shannon, who else we have?
So the next comment I am seeing is from Kevin Carroll. I'm going to allow to talk.
Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening. Um, the subject I'd like to talk to at this point is, I was checking South Toledo, Mill Valley, Corner Madera, Tiburon websites to check on the November election. And what I found interesting is on all those sites, generally with just two mouse clicks, I could pull up information about the filing dates for the election and what, how to contact the city clerk and what forms had to be filled out, et cetera. But on the Larkspur website, just mouse clicks won't get you there. You have to actually go to the search engine, put in election two thousand twenty-two and you come up with a couple of headings and the most recent is the May report to the city council, a staff report that provides some of the information. And I just thought that that was interesting, that all the other city council webpages are much more forthcoming about the upcoming election compared to Larkspur. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. So great comment. Good to know that. Shannon, any other?
Yes, we have a few, we have a few more comments.
Okay.
So the next person I'll be calling on is Jim Burrows. Uh, sorry. Um, let me lower your hand and move, Jim. And then, I'm sorry. Um, the next person is David Mahler. We're not allowed to talk.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Paulson, council members and staff. It's David Mahler. I live in Larkspur and tonight I'm commenting on behalf of the eighteen members of the Larkspur Climate Group. I also want to touch on Larkspur's response to the civil grand jury report about building electrification that appears on the consent calendar and a draft letter is actually in the package. We're very glad to see Larkspur agrees.
David, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Um, the other council members reminded me, actually, if you don't mind waiting till we get to the consent calendar, the, the, that might be a better time just before we can ask the public to comment and see if there's any items they'd like to poll and then council members as well. So just as a matter of procedure, I realized Jim went ahead and I didn't. and then council members as well. So just as a matter of procedure, I realized Jim went ahead and I didn't know that. But if you can hold your comment, we'll most eagerly hear what you have to say then.
Be very happy to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next comment.
Okay, so there, so any commenters who would like to comment on the consent calendar item we have for the response to the grand jury report should wait until, are we pulling that item off of the consent calendar?
No, we're not pulling it off. Actually.
We're working on some technical issues. You have a substitute city clerk here.
Yeah, so, so just as a matter of procedure, if anyone wants to make a comment on something on the consent calendar, perhaps we can do that after public expression, public comment, and then, you know, we'll take those comments and see if that needs to be pulled.
I think, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, we're getting a little convoluted in the way we're running the meeting. But if you're going to do it that way, I would encourage you to just announce you're going to pull the item if you have a bunch of speakers. It's going to get too chaotic for us.
Okay, so we'll pull it already.
And then, as a, to reiterate the request, if people want to speak on off-agenda items, this is the public comment period to do that.
Okay, so for folks joining us remotely, if you would like to speak on the grand jury item, please lower your hand for now. You can raise it again when we bring up that item. But if there are any other public comments for items that are not on the agenda, please leave your hand raised. Right, so we have, I'm seeing one public comment from Leslie. I'm going to enable talking.
Hi, I was, I'm sorry, I was waiting to speak on the, regarding the rent control. So I think that should wait till later.
Correct, thank you, Leslie.
Okay, Leslie, I'm going to lower your hand. Please raise it again when we get to that item and.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, so we have one more public comment, and that is from Daria Said. Are you with us? I'm going to ask you to unmute and allow you to talk again.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I am not, my accent is different. And my name is Duriya Sayed, and I'm an outreach analyst.
I am sorry to interrupt. We're having a little bit of interference, so you're a little bit muffled coming through in the council chambers here. So if you can adjust your audio setup, if at all possible, maybe it'll be a little bit clearer so we can hear you a little bit better.
Can you hear me better now?
Much better, thank you. Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Duriya Sayed, and I am an outreach analyst in the community relations branch of the.
Hi, I'm really sorry to interrupt you again, but we seem to be losing you again. It's pretty muffled.
Oh, okay. Is it better now?
It's better again. Let's try again.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, my name is Duriya Sayed, and I'm, I'm an outreach analyst in the community relations and outreach branch of the Department of Insurance. And it's a wildfire season, so I want to touch bases on safer from wildfires. It's an inter-agency partnership between Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the emergency response and readiness agencies in the Governor Gavin Newsom's administration. And its purpose is to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. We are working with wildfire, Cal OES, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and the California Public Utilities Commission. We are, Commissioner Lara is using every tool available to improve insurance for our communities. And so it's a ground-up approach for wildfire resilience. It has three layers of protection. We call it SFW 123 Plan. And number one is to protect the structures such as making sure your roof and vents are up to cold. The second is the immediate surroundings, like brush too close to your home or are there flammable, are there flammable items stored under your deck? And finally, number three, the community. And that's involving the entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading to other homes and businesses in the neighborhood. So these include the enhanced infrastructures and program like wildfire-wise. Additionally, I would like to have a chance to present to you California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. And it's, it's a state-sponsored program created by the legislatures. The premium, depending on the county you live in, but in Marin County is $317. And it's very easy to apply. Just go on MyLowCostAutoInsurance and MyLowCost.com and take the eligibility quiz, which is just a few questions, like seven questions. Or you can apply directly through the certified agent. I'm not seeing the time, so I'm thinking that my time is up. But I would like to send this information to city clerks, so you guys have all the information about the program. And just want to remind you that Department of Insurance is here to help you in any possible way. And our hotline is there at 800-927-4357. And we have a dedicated staff and we call you back in two minutes if you don't get us at the first stand. So I just want you to know that we are here for you.
Great, thank you, Darian. Yeah, and if you want to mail that information to city clerk, that'd be fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Shannon, anybody else?
I'm not seeing any other members of the public who'd like to participate in public comment at this time.
Okay, great. And nobody in chambers, no raised hands. Okay, good. So we'll close that and we'll move on to presentations and proclamations, which we have none. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. And I guess as recommended by the city manager, we'll go ahead and pull off 4.7, which is the approval of the city's response to the Marin County, Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report on electrifying Marin's buildings. So other than 4.7, does any member of the public want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Not seeing any raised hands or anybody in the chambers who'd like to pull another item from the consent calendar.
Great. Is any member of the council want to pull any items?
No, I'd just like to make a motion to formally pull that item from the consent calendar and have it considered. So we need to get a staff.
Sure, so we have a motion to pull 4.7. Do we have a second? Okay.
I don't actually think you need to vote on the pulling of an item. I think that's the mayor's discretion.
Okay.
Your attorney agrees with me, so.
Okay.
Could I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus any one item that was pulled?
Sure, so we have a motion to approve all eight items except for 4.7. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Great, so the consent calendar passes except for 4.7. So let's revisit that. And I believe there was some public comment, which I was hoping to, you know, pull together at this time. So I believe David Muller was up.
Before the speakers are invited, Mr. Vice Mayor, you may want staff to make a brief comment, which I will.
Okay.
About the item.
Yeah.
I also, the housekeeping measure, wanted to note, this is the first time in two and a half years that the entire body's present in the council chamber. You are not required, therefore, to take roll call votes on every single item. So you may not want to do that in the future, just to let you know, you can actually do a good old-fashioned all in favor. We can take that.
The roll calls are fun.
Just wanted to throw it out there. I'll leave it to the vice mayor's discretion how we'll handle business. It is remarkable. It's been that long since we were all together. With that, Mr. Mayor, from time to time, the grand jury issues reports on topics that finds of interest or imperative to the community. The grand jury elected to issue a report called Electrifying Marin's Buildings, a countywide approach. Want to thank assistant to the city manager Shannon O'Hara did the analysis and presented you with the written report. We agreed with all the findings of the grand jury. And with respect to all the recommendations, we suggested further analysis was necessary, in part because there's a lot of discussion in the report about collaboration with the other jurisdictions, which will take time. So that, Mr. Mayor, now I think if you want to invite public comment.
Great. Thank you, city manager. So yeah, if we want to go back to public comments, I think we left off with David Muller.
Yeah, first, let's just see if there's anybody in the chambers who'd like to speak. Not seeing anybody coming up. So David, I'm going to go ahead and call on you and I'm going to ask you to unmute. You're actually all lined up.
All right, thank you so much for pulling the item. It was not clear at all from the instruction for the council meeting that a member of the public would have the ability to cause an item to be pulled and therefore able to comment on it. So that's why I started the comments earlier, just something to think about going forward. But I am happy to have this opportunity. Thank you for pulling the item. I want to say that we're very, and again, I'm speaking on behalf of the 18 members of the Larkspur Climate Group. We're very glad to see that Larkspur agrees with the findings 1 through 6. I hope all council members have taken a look at that civil grand jury report. These findings really are pretty self-evident in stating that use of natural gas in buildings is a major source of greenhouse gas emissions and that we, we need to stop making the problem worse with new buildings and start ramping down gas use in existing buildings. And we're also really encouraged that Larkspur's responses to the three recommendations are also positive. There is one thing that we want to comment on, and that is that the draft response seems to overemphasize that each jurisdiction has unique needs and constituencies that may require different considerations. And while this is often the case, in this case, the fact of the matter is that if we continue to build buildings with gas space and water heaters, doing so will increase greenhouse gas emissions to the detriment of everyone. And if we don't start ramping down our use of gas in existing buildings, we have no chance of meeting our greenhouse gas reduction goals to try and avoid the worst impacts of climate change. And there really is nothing unique about these causes and effects. And there's, and there are impacts from jurisdiction to jurisdiction and constituent to constituent. It affects everyone the same. When we think about our worsening climate crisis and the substantial impact of continuing and possibly even increasing the burning of natural gas in new buildings, we need to be less timid and really take decisive actions. Larkspur's Climate Action Plan 2030 already commits Larkspur to adopt an all-electric ordinance for new buildings by January 1st, '23. And it also calls for considering an ordinance in 2024 to start ramping down gas prices and equipment in existing buildings. So we're wondering, in the response to the grand jury report, why not restate these commitments that are already made and, and double down on them? So we, we kind of recommend that Larkspur's response to our recommendation 1 through 3, make a stronger commitment to achieving the goals of the grand jury's recommendations, while still noting that specific ordinances will require additional analysis, discussion, and approval of the city of Larkspur, Larkspur City Council. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, David. Any other public comments on item 4.7 on the consent calendar?
All right, I am seeing a public comment from a call-in number that does not have a name. I'm going to allow this number to talk. It ends in 402.
James Holmes, Larkspur, I would just point out that in my view, considerable caution is, continues to be warranted in approaching the issue of electrification because unfortunately, the fact remains that electricity is currently still more expensive and less reliable than gas. And until the problems of storage and transmission are solved, that is probably likely to continue to be the case, not to mention all of the problems with PG&E. So I do think a certain amount of circumspection continues to be appropriate as we approach the issue of electrification. Thank you.
Great, thank you, James. Any other public comments?
I saw a couple of hands raised that are now not raised. So if that happened by tech glitch or if folks decided not to talk, I'm saying, can we just wait one moment? Okay, and the hand isn't now raised. So I'm seeing a raised hand from Leslie. I'm going to go ahead. Leslie seems to have lowered her hand. I'm going to give another sec, sorry. If you have public comment, no, just a second. All right. I'm going to allow Leslie to talk.
Thank you. I would like Dan Milmer to look at the people who are speaking and pay attention to them because they are also members of our community. And he is looking down and he looks like he's disinterested and it looks like he's looking at his phone. And I would appreciate it very much. As a member of the Larkspur community, if you would pay attention to what these people are saying. Thank you very much. I'll lower my hand.
Yeah, Leslie, okay, yeah, if you're referring to Mayor Hillmer, he's not here today, so I'm not.
Who's that guy in the green jacket?
Oh. Yeah, that's Councilmember Harof.
Well, still.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Okay, any other comments?
Not seeing any more comments in the chambers or online or via virtual participation.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
I'll move 4.7.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to the consent item. And I actually do ask we do a roll call.
Okay. Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Okay, passes for. Thank you for everybody for those comments and for the discussion. So the next item on our agenda tonight is the city manager's oral report. So could we please have us a report, Dan? Thank you.
Couple of things, very briefly, for the council member and council members in public. If you've been driving in our downtown proximity, it's a little chaotic. Thank you for your patience. Please remember that as we're doing road construction work, those folks are trying their best. Road construction is a business that requires a lot of safety precaution. And all the delays and the folks that are out there asking you to stop and slow down are trying to maintain safety for everybody as we work our way through the construction without having to close the road, which we're trying to still allow people to traverse the road while we get that work done. It just happens that unfortunately, the nexus of two projects are pretty close together, so we have a lot going on in that zone. I also want to encourage the public to pay attention to the many signs that are out there. We've had some reports of some folks having some issues, and I think it's because they're not reading all the signage. That's, that's up directing them on where's the safe place to be and where's a not safe place to be during construction. So encourage folks to go slow, be patient. We'll all get through this together. Our downtown, where we've done the work, looks great. We just want to finish the rest of the work so everybody can enjoy our improved roads and our improved conditions. Other than that, I just wanted to remind the public that, and you heard one of the speakers talking about earlier, this is the open period for election filing. So if there are folks who are interested, please reach out to the city clerk and she will provide instruction on the process for considering candidacy for city council. With that, I'm going to turn back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Great, and any questions of the city manager? No. Okay, so our next item is council member oral reports and comments. Any council members have anything to report?
Hi, welcome, everyone. I have just a few things I'd like to share with my council and the community. The first is council member Hara and myself are the representatives with the Commons Foundation, which is the organization who is raising funds for our new library and community center. And we met last Tuesday virtually. The Commons is committed to raising $5 million. We are hopefully going to receive a California State Library's matching grant. They're close to their fundraising goal, which is terrific news for us so that we can move forward by, in the next several months with looking at design for our new library and community center right here on Dougherty. I'd like to thank that Commons group for really a lot of the hard work they've done to reach out to the broader community to help make this public-private partnership work. Second thing is, I'm the liaison for the Chamber of Commerce, and they've announced the Wine Stroll. For those of you who have come before, it's going to be on Saturday, September 10th. And I believe, how many wineries they have? Something like 20 now. 23 wineries that are participating, and it's a fundraiser for the chamber. All of Magnolia will have the shops open and an opportunity for, to, to look at and taste wines from around the state and like everybody to participate who's interested. Last, third, I attended as sort of a representative of Larkspur, the swearing-in of our new sheriff. That was last Thursday at the Board of Supervisors office. We have elected Jamie Sardina as our new Marin County Sheriff. There were a lot of law enforcement and fire and police there representing many, many counties. So it's our first sheriff in, I think, 37 years. So when Sheriff Bob Doyle retired, look forward. look forward to continuing our mutual sharing of resources with the sheriff's department when we need mutual aid calls. Last thing is, I just wanted to commend the Public Works Department and probably Rita for some brand-new memorial benches that are out on the walkway, the Sandra Marker Trail or the Mournham Walkway that I walk practically every day. There's about five new memorial benches that have been put out there, and I chair the Larkspur Age Friendly Commission. And I'm really pleased to see that they are positioned in ways that make them age-friendly, meaning that they are within a distance that's easy to walk to for someone, or easier to walk to for someone who's maybe a senior who has mobility challenges. There are also benches with a backrest and with armrests, which are terrific to be age-friendly. So look forward to seeing more about the Age Friendly Commission as we move into the new year. We're going to do a lot with trying to really create policy and opportunities to look at the way we spend our money in Larkspur and the way we create policies that look at all spectrums of age. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Way. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you, Catherine, for everything you just said. The work that's been done on the lot with the Commons Foundation, the library project is terrific. Catherine and I have been in there, I think, from the inception of their efforts. And they created expectations that, well, I think we were kind of skeptical that they might meet, and they have done a terrific job. So we are very appreciative of that collaboration and look forward to the success of the project. And then since you took advantage of the opportunity to mention the Wine Stroll, as you sure did, since I'm on the board and have a leadership role with Chamber of Commerce, we are looking forward to that event. It will be terrific. I think, as I said, we had twenty-three wineries signed up, which is more than I think we've ever had in the past. We're following on a terrific event that we had last year, which is, I think, one of the reasons why we have more wineries than we've ever had before, because it's just going to be a great event. So I really encourage everyone to come and join us for that, for that day. It'll be, it'll be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Scott?
I've got nothing to report today.
Nothing to report today. Okay, great. I just briefly wanted to thank the community. We're into August, and, you know, we all are aware this is fire season, and a lot of people have been really doing their part, home hardening. And we have the Ross-spall-issued fuel break plan going into place. And that's one of the priorities of the city council and of the, you know, city government is to keep us safe and fire season is one of those times. So thank you to all who are doing that and to the staff and people involved. One other thing was, we, our last city council meeting was rather surprising to me. We came in at six-thirty and we left close to eleven. And I have a feeling tonight might be something like that again. And I see a raised hand, but one second, let me finish. And we were discussing where to put a sign a few blocks from here, and it was a long and robust discussion. And it seems like we've come to a resolution. It seems the homeowners association is happy with the solution. I want to thank our Public Works Director for working through that. And sir, if you want to say something briefly, it's kind of out of process, but go ahead. No, that's, 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 that is actually the next agenda item. So I just meant that.
Two away. It's not the next agenda item. There's a public hearing before that.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Two away. So I don't think, and no, I don't think we're going to be here talking that late. So on that note, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which is the amending the fee schedule to add an encroachment permit and land development engineering fee. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Good evening, council members of the public. We do have tonight a public hearing item for you, so I'll give you a brief staff report, and then I'm available for any questions. And then we'll ask you to open up the public hearing. So the item tonight is to amend the fee schedule to specifically add an encroachment permit fee specifically for outdoor dining in the public right-of-way. This is a result of our many meetings we've had over the last few years regarding parklets and outdoor dining. And so as we brought a parklet policy to you at one of our May meetings, we received direction from you that you would like to start charging fees for the outdoor use of the right-of-way. So we have drafted an amendment to the fee tonight. So I will read what the proposed amendment to the fee schedule is. So it would be adding encroachment permit and land development engineering fee nine C, which would be a square footage area charge for outdoor dining in the public right-of-way at a reasonable rate as determined by the city engineer and comparable to leases at or near the outdoor dining location for similar use. So if adopted tonight, the fee would become effective immediately. And so any business that came forward with a permit for outdoor dining in the right-of-way would be subject to the fee. That's the conclusion of my report. I'm available for any questions and would ask that you open a public hearing.
Great. So let's open the public hearing. And any questions from council members?
Yeah, I had a quick question, Julian. So we're basically empowering staff to determine what the local fee would be comparable to, you know, what stores are charging in that area. If a tenant applicant disagrees, would they have a right to appeal that to us? If anyone knows.
Under the municipal code, the interpretation would be appealable from staff to the city manager and from the city manager to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Familiar with that process?
Yes, thank you.
I guess that's sort of my question too, because it's, the city engineer has not completed the fully valuation of the fee for this fiscal year. So it sounded to me that we're passing a resolution without really knowing what that charge will be. And hoping that it stays within a reasonable amount, an example being five dollars per square foot.
So this is similar. So for comparison, you have a moratorium fee that we charge people that cut into the street, and that's a fee that's established by the engineering department based on the going rate for paving on similar projects. So this would be a similar process. Basically, every year I do an analysis, I write a memo to the file with my findings on what the fee should be, and that establishes the fee for the next twelve months.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Now, we, the other question I was trying to figure out was, some of the cities are basing their encroachment on how much a parking meter, let's say, burns during the course of a day. We don't have parking meters, so.
Yeah, that wasn't the direction we received. It was to be more of a lease structure comparable to the lease rates. Parking's a little awkward because, you know, some, in some places, parking is a revenue source, but in other places, parking is a means of controlling parking, the turnover and things like that. So it's, gets a little cumbersome to use parking, and as you mentioned, we don't have parking meters, so.
Okay, that was my question. Thanks.
I thought I'd just enter into the record, too. The city does retain an expert on the adoption of fees by the, by the city, by a government entity. He reviewed the proposed and actually recommended that we move forward with the proposed language.
I think the comparison to cutting into the sidewalk for sewers and things, because I noticed on my street, it can be a patch that's four by five feet, and other times the patch is ten by thirty feet. So I see where that, you can have that good comparison. Thanks.
Okay, any other council members? Any questions of our Public Works Director? Any comments? Any thoughts? So let me just go back to the public one more time. Is anybody?
Mr. Vice Mayor, you should formally state that you're opening the public hearing and taking comments.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so then we are opening the public hearing and taking comments from the public. Anybody wish to comment on this matter? Shannon, do you see anyone online?
I'm seeing nobody in the chambers who'd like to comment on this item, and I'm seeing no raised hands and virtual participants this time.
Okay, just give it a few more moments. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council, and it looks like.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the official statement is you're closing the public hearing and coming back to the council.
Okay.
You're getting a trial run.
Practicing.
Okay, so we're closing the public hearing now and bringing it back to the council. Any, any other comments? Any thoughts?
I'm happy to move the resolution unless others want to discuss it further.
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And again, if we could just do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Harof?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Great, so that motion passes, and we're done with our public hearings. And I want to thank everybody for indulging my training here as Vice Mayor for mayor. So the next, we move to our business items, and the first business item is the request from members of the public that the city council discuss rent control. So I believe, begin with a staff report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. I'll be very brief and simply incorporate primarily for the record, the written staff report. At your last meeting, in response to numerous requests to discuss rent control, the council directed staff to place on the agenda an item that would allow you to discuss the topic in general terms with an emphasis on, is it something the council wants to examine? And what sort of path would you like to take in terms of both that examination? And what sort of public engagement you would like? So staff reminds the council and the public that there was a 2019 study session about a number of renter protection approaches that are used by different cities. And one, although some of these things subsequently have been adopted by the state, generally the research that was done for that 2019 meeting remains valid. The council has the option this evening to discuss the way this item's been structured. You can discuss and give us direction about an engagement process. You, we've asked you what sort of resources you may want dedicated to this topic. I want to emphasize for the public, I know there's numerous folks interested in speaking. This item is not structured to make any decision about any particular aspect of whether it's rent control or rent protections or tenant landlord relations, but rather to give us instruction on the types of things you would like to know more about. That is a common practice of this council, and so this is a pretty standard approach for you. As we indicated in the staff report, in which I note that some of your public commenters have expounded upon, we have, as a percentage, one of the largest renter populations in the county. And consequently, we have a pretty significant landlord population. We would need time to break that down to get you full detailed demographics of those numbers. But we know it's a pretty significant outreach process to touch everybody. So that in and of itself is its own timetable. And as you go through this, just want folks to bear in mind, whatever process you do decide, it's going to take some time. It's not going to happen tomorrow. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Okay. So shall we open the floor for public comment?
Let's talk first. Did you want to start?
Sure, I have a few questions. I was one who wanted to bring this forward because it's been a subject that we've had a lot of community questions about. And I think it's, a lot of those questions have come during public comment time, so we haven't had a chance to talk. So agendizing it allows this to happen. It's a very complex issue, and I think it's a really important one that we make sure we acknowledge that the community has a lot of concerns about it, and there's a lot of confusion, too. I'm confused about how the process actually works. So I'd like us to start with sort of, how does a city enact a rent control situation, a process? And particularly a city with our size jurisdiction. We have more than fifty-three percent of Larkspur residents live in multifamily homes. We have a lot of renters and a lot of members of the community who actually own property, who would have to be engaged in a process about, about any type of measures that we put forward. So I'm trying to learn myself so that we can make sure we educate the community. If it's, if an ordinance, let's say, is enacted, how does then it become fulfilled? How does it become adjudicated if there's issues? How does notice come forward? Or am I just opening up a big can of worms that we need a long time to?
I think generally tonight, the main concern for staff is if you want that analyzed. But I can give you a very quick explanation, and if you would like the city attorney to expand upon it, I'm sure he'd be happy to expand upon it. He'd be happy to do so. A lot of the answer to your question is, it depends what you want to accomplish, right? You have, if you go through this process, if you elect to do so, you're going to face a number of policy questions. At its fundamental core is, what are you trying to accomplish? What is an appropriate cap on rent, for example? And if you have that, most jurisdictions provide exemption processes for landlords that requires administration. I think you have a letter in your packet from the apartment association, owner's association, talking about how much some of the larger cities spend annually to administer rent control. Right now, I want to remind the council and the public, the state has rent control across the state. So it's implied but not explicit in any of the statements from speakers to date and during your public comment. But what I think they're really asking for is something more significant, or I would say a cap that's lower than what the state has created. How it plays out will depend a lot on what you are allowing as the path to these different outcomes. So it's hard for me to answer the question. The devil will be in the details as we go through the process.
And in, within Marin County, it's, then of the eleven cities and towns, my understanding is none of them have a policy for rent stabilization, other than the one brought forward during the COVID emergency.
So I want to also clarify too, because I thought some of the letters may have confused something. There is rent stabilization, rent control for the world of apartment complexes, so to speak. More than two units, right? That's what I think a lot of speakers are actually engaged. Then there's mobile home parks, totally separate set of law. So, and have to be dealt with separately, these two topics. People can talk about them, but legally, they're separate issues. There are some rent stabilization for mobile home parks in our county, but there are none for apartment buildings other than the state rules at this time. There are other communities also talking about this subject right now.
The one, Larkspur, I mean Fairfax and San Antonio are the ones I'm aware of.
I don't believe San Antonio's had a significant conversation yet, but they're kind of in the same place you are, if I understand it. Fairfax certainly had a public process to date.
And what about the unincorporated areas?
I'm not aware that they have agendized this in any way.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure we're trying to educate each other as well as the community about this, because it's a very complex issue, I know.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Scott.
All right, thank you. First of all, thanks. I know a lot of people are here for this issue, a lot of people online for this issue. Thank you. I think we all wanted to bring this to a group discussion. I don't have a position on it right now. I want to hear what everybody has to say. I want to just let everybody know where I'm coming from and the issues that I wrestle with, with this particular situation. I think most people would agree, we don't want people getting kicked out of their housing. We don't want rental increases to cause people to leave, especially someplace that they've been for a significant period of time. On the flip side of the coin, I also want to make sure that there is a financial incentive for somebody who owns multi-unit buildings, because that's why we have these types of housing opportunities, is because somebody is investing in it. Somebody's putting money in to fix it up. Somebody is doing something. The reason they're doing it is for a profit motive. There are very few situations I'm aware of where someone out of the goodness of their heart says, hey, I'm going to, you know, get a multi-unit building and lose a lot of money because I think it's the right thing to do. So there's that balance that we have to, have to have to make sure these units exist and that we have the right incentives, but yet we protect the people who are in there. One of the benchmarks that people use is inflation. And they say, you know what, that's kind of a number that we look at and we say, hey, if somebody owns a. if somebody owns a building and their costs are going up for utilities or their rates on the mortgage or insurance, whatever it happens to be, we don't want to put them in a situation where they're losing money. So so that's kind of one side of the equation. The other side is, you know, if we don't want them gouging tenants, you know, and and, you know, profiting off other people losing their their homes. The challenge we have right now is that inflation is probably about nine percent. So there is a cap, a state set cap at ten percent. So legally, there's not much, even a bad faith landlord, not much they can do right now because inflation is so high. So what I am looking for is to have suggestions from the public of what do you think would be fair? You know, I'm, you know, we could have a rent stabilization where we say rent can only be increased by X percent per year. The state has it at ten, but if we put it at five and inflation is at nine, is that the right answer? Is that fair? You know, or do we tie it to inflation, say, you know? I I don't know. I I again, that's, that is the conversation that I think needs to be had, is what is the fair way to balance these two things? So I I am looking forward to public comment, to hearing what people have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Kevin?
Just briefly, and I appreciate, Scott, your comments, Catherine, your comments. And I haven't really heard anything from either one of you that I necessarily disagree with. This this conversation has been going on for quite a while on the council and throughout the community. And I have to say that my views about the issue have changed over time. When this conversation started, my perspective tended to be kind of more of a traditional, you know, what what do economists say about rent control? And usually, they say that it's a bad idea. I've come to the view at this point that that's naive. And that what people may have gotten used to in terms of market conditions, and this is really in the multifamily area more than anything else. And we do have to take into consideration that we don't have, that we have more than just multifamily. But in the multifamily area, I think market conditions have really changed. I think there have been opportunities that have been created by the market for landlords and owners and development concerns to alter the dynamics of the market in a way that renters can't control. To me, that means we have to take action. I know that the state has taken action. I know other communities are considering action. But we do have a very robust rental community in the city of Larkspur. And I think that almost compels us to take a leadership role on this issue. And I think the process that has been outlined by our city manager, at least in a preliminary way, is appropriate. We need to study it because we need to make sure we don't trip over ourselves as we develop a policy. We need to be fair. We need to be just, but we need to be aggressive, I think, on this subject. And I say that recognizing that it's not something I would have said a year or two ago. So again, I think the process that's been outlined for us in a preliminary way to engage the public in a robust discussion about a rent control ordinance for the city of Larkspur is the step that we need to move forward on. And I welcome comments from the public on this. But I feel pretty strongly now that the world is different than it was a while ago when I started thinking about this issue. And it's time for us to take a leadership role in taking action.
Explore that a little bit more, and then I definitely want to hear from everybody. Marin is a very uniquely jurisdictionally confusing place. We have eleven cities and towns, but half of the Greenbrier Hills is county, half of it is Greenbrier, which is actually Larkspur. So we have a lot of very straight, I don't want to say strange borders, but we have a lot of really loosey goosey borders when it comes to things. And my, the challenge, I think, we'll we will find if we move forward with this is that we are almost interlocked with so many other jurisdictions where one street away, we're an entirely different city. And I don't, I I'm challenged to think of how we can become more collaborative and homogenistic with this approach, because we are a very small geographic area. We're a small population, but we have a lot of governance. So however, it's the most effective way to bring proper governance to the community, I think is an important thing we need to think of, too. I don't know what the answer is to that, because I can walk one block that way, and I'm in Corder Madara, and that the, I can walk one block that way, and I'm in Corder Madara. So we're very connected together, so policies like this may need to be more collaborative with our other jurisdictions. I kind of put that forward, because I think that's what the mayor was saying last time this conversation came up, was that perhaps the approach needs to be broader to the county rather than the jurisdictions. I don't have the answer to that. But Larkspur has three large tenant associate, not tenant associations, but tenant groups, Skylark, Serenity, and then the Bon Air Management Group. But we have hundreds of smaller landlords who own two to four unit parcels. So just putting that out there, it's a complex issue. And I know many of you here may live in one of those larger areas, but your neighbors may live in an unincorporated area, and they are just one street away. So it's always been a dilemma for me for how we govern when we have, when we have such close proximity. It's not like San Francisco, where it's one city and county in one space. We're a little bit more challenged that way. So just think that out when everybody's thinking about how we solve this problem, because I'm always terminating about it.
Thank you, council member.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask a quick question about the city attorney? If hypothetically, we decided we wanted to pass some type of rent stabilization ordinance, would we be able to draw a line and only have it apply to units that had were properties that had over a certain number of rental units? If, again, not that we, that's our decision, but hypothetically, if we wanted to do that, legally, could we do that? Or would that be somehow treating people differently and get ourselves into a little trouble?
It's something that I would want to do a little bit of research about. If the city council were interested in any in that direction. It's not something that I have previously researched, but I do know from other cities that some of them already have distinctions based on the number of units where they will exempt two duplexes or fourplexes. And then they will also draw lines between eight U's and G U's. And I know that, for example, in Berkeley, they've had a very extensive discussion about whether or not to continue to do U's. So I believe that it is possible, but I don't know if there are any limits on where the city council can do all that distinction. But but so something to to do additional research, but I believe that it is possible.
Thank you.
Great.
One more follow up. That that that's helpful. And I think what what actually would be helpful is to do the kind of research that you just described is necessary. And I think it would be helpful for us to have exemplars of ordinances or policies, you know, however it's gotten framed and whatever jurisdiction it has been teed up in a robust way. And to have those exemplars in front of us, recognizing that they may not necessarily work in all respects for this community. But to have us have a stepping stone to launch, as I said, what I'd like to see is an aggressive approach to adopting a robust rent control policy and ordinance for this community.
I think I can work with the city manager to to develop that information for you. And it's possible that somebody has already put together a matrix that that deals with some of those basic issues about, aside from legal issues, but sort of provides provides a matrix that shows where different cities are drawing that line.
That that would be extremely helpful, because I think right now, we're kind of working in the dark. But I know that other communities have made progress on this issues in ways that could be helpful for us to cut to the chase and get to a point where we're doing something that is responsible and respectful for everyone's interest in this issue.
One last thing, I went back and looked at the 2019 meeting where we had a conversation similar to this and looked at the public comment. And a lot of the public comment was from property owners who felt disengaged from the process. So it's really important that if we move forward, that there's continuous communication with not just the tenants' associations and the tenants themselves and the renters, but with property owners, because they are also a component of this conversation in many different components of the conversation we're going to have tonight, parklets and restaurants and everything. There are the people who live within the space, and they're the people who own the space. So I just need to make sure we recognize that the property owner is also a decision maker within this process.
Great. Any other council members, any comments? So I I want to again express my appreciation and gratitude. There are about twenty-five of you. You've been patiently waiting. We definitely want to hear from you. If I can just take a brief moment to summarize it. It sounds like, you know, we have the council members, you know, putting some questions or trying to see what type of information and thought processes we have. So in the spirit of transparency and engagement, you know what we're thinking and what we might need from you. And, you know, I haven't said anything, but I I would just like to say, I think this is a fairly complicated issue. I've been really trying to involve myself in housing from the beginning. I I worked on housing issues and on the Housing Committee. And I I think we learned so much from the public. So we're really looking forward to, you know, thoughtful and and and, you know, whatever comments you have for us, something we can learn from, something we can work on together. So unless there's anything else from the city manager, go ahead.
I think it'd be helpful, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you set some housekeeping rules. You may want to establish how many, how long each speaker has. We typically allow the online speakers first, just because it's a little easier for us to work our way through online speakers. And then lastly, you have, somebody asked me to clap, I suggest you impose decorum in the in in the item if we lose decorum.
Okay, yeah, so so I I think that's all fair. I have a timer up here. I really want this to be a very human process. But I I do think we also, like the one gentleman said, he was scared that we're going to go to eleven. I want to maintain some sense of timing and scheduling in order. So I'll I'll be looking at the clock, and I want to hear everybody out. But as we get to the one minute point, I'll say you have a minute left. And we will start online, because as you all know, have worked on Zoom. That is sometimes harder, and those people may be not able to stay as long, et cetera. And and lastly, you know, let's let's try to stay objective. So this is a very passionate issue. I feel also it's it's something that we have to address. But the more we can stay, you know, fair and and engaged and empathetic with with all sides, I think the the more progress we'll make on the issue.
Do you think it would be helpful to sort of say, like, for instance, in the staff report, it says on issues, policy issues like this, we often start with a work-study session, and then you can move into town hall meetings, or you can have an ad hoc committee? Is that?
Yeah.
Maybe, can you describe that so people may have feedback on what they think?
If the council gives us direction tonight, what staff asked for direction on was whether you wanted to use one or all of those processes that you've used in the past. You're kind of holding a quasi-town hall meeting right now, although we didn't advertise like we normally would. The other direction we're seeking by the end is whether or not you want us to solicit someone with more expertise in this area. While your staff's comfortable giving you general parameters about the topics outlined as various rent control, rent protection, tenant landlord relations. There are nuances here. For example, Councilmember Wade, your questions about what can we and can't we do? I can give you the legal answers. I would encourage you to think about whether you want to bring in somebody who's more experienced and knowledgeable about the pros and cons of these different policy choices you may face.
Mr. Vice Mayor? I agree with that entirely, that this takes us to a level of needed expertise that we probably don't have right off the bat. That said, I would I would support retention of a consultant to help advise us on this and to come up with policy prescriptions that we can work with in short order. That's part of the reason I was asking for exemplars of what other communities may have done. I don't really care how we get to that point. I I I'm, I I would be reluctant to support, with due respect to the public, a a lengthy process on this with lots of meetings, town council things, all that sort of thing. I think we 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 are hearing from our community in this context today. And we will in future city council meetings hear again at that time what the community wants. I think that's sufficient. I really do support the suggestion that we engage someone who can provide us with more professional expertise about what we might want to do. But I strongly suggest that I hope the end result of that process will be a recommendation for the adoption of a robust rent control ordinance for the city of Larkspur.
Okay, thank you. So I I think, Councilmember Wade, if I understand it, you were saying it might be useful for the public to know what next steps are. And I actually, if it's a, if it's okay with the rest of you, I I feel the public's waited long enough. Let's not put the cart in front of the horse and let people speak. And then we know that there are next steps that we want to discuss. So this isn't just to talk, we want to hear you. But then we also, as is on, you know, the staff report, we have some options as to, you know, where we go from here. So with that, Shannon, if you can start with the online.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could I recommend, based on the number of people we're anticipating speaking, that we limit it to two minutes?
Sure, by show of hands, how many people here want to speak? Okay, so that's actually about a third, which is eight, and then I see about eight. I think I think we could probably, I I don't know. I mean, I I think, let's let's go with three minutes. And at right now, we're at, the time is seven thirty-six. I I mean, if we have, yeah, this might go over an hour and a half.
Mr. Vice Mayor, an alternative suggestion. This is not a public hearing. You're not required to keep this open. So you may want to establish how long you're going to allow the public to speak.
Okay.
Thirty minutes or forty-five minutes or whatever, because I suspect as we go along, I've found with these sorts of items, it's going to stimulate folks who want to speak more than once.
Yeah.
So you may want to possibly cap the.
And I'm sorry, just an opinion is, I would rather hear from everyone who wants to speak for a shorter period of time than to cap it at a half an hour and ten people speak for three, three minutes each, and then we don't get to hear from everybody else.
Okay, fair enough. So, you know, based on the suggestions here, and I I hope you all agree with me, we want to hear from all of you. So given that this could be thirty people times three minutes, that's an hour and a half, and then we get a headache. I've set the timer to two minutes. And then if if we can try to be, you know, really try to make your point. You know, I think if you make your point, we'll hear you. So with that, Shannon, if you can go to the first.
Just a couple of additional points, just for the community who's listening. There were a number of written comments that were received by the council. Many of those are available online, and those that came in later were distributed to the council. So if you sent in a written comment, those have also been received.
Right.
And then for folks who are speaking in person, please come up to the mic and don't speak from the audience, because for accessibility issues, we won't be able to hear you. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start with our online folks, and we're going to allow everyone to speak once and go through as many speakers.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, so the first person I am going to call on is Tristan.
Tristan, go ahead. We can't hear you right now. Maybe you can unmute.
I I think I.
I I think I can hear me now.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, my name is Tristan. Thank you, uh, Vice uh Mayor Paulson and City Council. Uh, I am a founding member of the Skylark Tenants Association. Um, and I I will be speaking on behalf. Um, one thing I would like to call out before again is that rental protections, uh rental conversations around rental protections generally revolve around the landlord's perspectives. Um, given that they have a vested interest in protecting their income and are more likely to be within positions of power in their community as a result. Uh, that's not surprising. It happened just now. Uh, the um uh Councilmember Way, while I understand her concern, did equate the concerns of over six thousand Larkspur renters with the relatively few landlords that own their homes. Uh, and I'd like to make sure that we are clear about that imbalance of power. Um, additionally, I'd like to address a couple of the other comments that have been submitted, one by the California Apartment Owners Association. I think it's important to throw that in there. Uh, they claim that rent control problems are costly bureaucracy, uh while conveniently failing to mention that all of those programs in their example are entirely funded by small per unit fees on landlords themselves. So it's costly to them. Uh, and I'd also like to call out that one of their board members is Chris Scroggen, who is the Senior VP of Operations at Prime Finance, which bought Skylark Apartments earlier this year. So I'm going to reframe the conversation and ask a simple question. Why doesn't Skylark or Larkspur have any sort of rental protections? Half of your constituents are renters. Of those, half of them are rent burdened, meaning that they pay more than thirty percent of their income on men on rent. That means that as of twenty nineteen, a full quarter of your constituents are at at risk of losing their housing. And unless you were quite already quite wealthy, the pandemic did not improve your finance situation. So this situation now is more dire than ever. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition's twenty twenty-one Out of Reach Study, the average Marin resident would need to triple their hourly income or work a hundred and twenty hours a week to avoid a modest two-bedroom apartment without being rent burdened. How are people supposed to raise families by local services or even just participate in their community when so much of their time and resources are simply required to survive? Uh, one hundred percent of Larkspur residents under twenty-five are renters, as are eighty-four percent of residents.
Tristan, Tristan, I think we ran out of two minutes. If you just want to take ten seconds to wrap up your point.
Uh, we are not asking the city to do something they can't. On the contrary, we are asking them to do something they already should have done. Protect their constituents. This means a rent control that puts an annual cap on rent raises in text to CPI and expanded just cause protections that keep the most vulnerable of our neighbors safe from no-fault evictions. This is way forward. People are losing their homes now. Uh, thank you for your time.
Tristan, Tristan, let me ask you a quick question. Uh, your suggestion was for rent raises to be tied to CPI. Are you saying it should be like a one-to-one ratio?
Uh, we are, we are asking that uh we consider similar protections to Fairfax, which is capped at sixty percent of CPI.
Sixty percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan. Uh, next public comment.
The next public comment is from Vivian Tau. I'm going to enable you to talk.
Thank you. Uh, I'm a little nervous. I've never spoken before, city council before. And I live at Skylark and my rent was just increased eight point eight percent, which is a bit more than I was expecting, even though I was expecting a rent increase after not having one for several years. As you heard, Prime bought the complex about half a year ago. And my fear is they're going to raise the rent the maximum allowed by law every year and force me out, or it will become to the come to the point where I don't want to pay that rent anymore, or I can't afford to pay that rent anymore. I've been living here for fourteen years, which is by far the longest I've lived anywhere in my life. And um, I want to echo what Tristan said about um uh establishing um an annual cap um on what landlords can, how how much landlords can raise the rent based on inflation and also establish just cause eviction protections to prevent arbitrary evictions and protect renters displaced due to no fault of their own. And I agree with um Councilmember Harrah, who said this needs to be done in a robust way as soon as possible. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Vivian. Um, next speaker, please.
The next speaker we have is Liesel Blash. I'm going to allow you to talk.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is, hi. Um, thank you for a really good discussion tonight. My name is Liesel Blash. As I said, I'm speaking on behalf of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, or MECC. Um, we are a multidisciplinary consortium generating support for projects and policies that advance affordable housing, environmental sustainability and social justice. So I'm speaking tonight in support of the Skylark residents and request that the city of Larkspur consider rent stabilization and expanding rental protections. At MECC, we believe that the most environmentally friendly way to provide affordable housing is to keep existing tenants in their homes. I had prepared some comments, but you can read the gist of those in the packet. I did want to note that rent stabilization does not take the profit out of being a rental property owner. It simply caps that profit at a rate related to inflation, as several speakers have noted. Landlords can petition to raise the rent higher than the cap if they have a reason to go above that. And as somebody noted, it's generally set at sixty to sixty-five percent of CPI. So um I'm going to encourage you to speak to people who are more knowledgeable about this. Legal aid of Marin has been working with Fairfax on this. Um, and they are quite knowledgeable and I believe have provided a model ordinance to Fairfax, which Fairfax is tailoring to its own jurisdiction. Um, and I know that people feel like, you know, maybe somebody else will take this on. Maybe the county will take it on and we won't have to do it. Um, but I'm not going to count on the county to take it on. I think somebody has to start. And Fairfax has sort of taken up the charge. Sand and Summer is also considering it. Um, and there is a hope that sometime maybe there will be collaboration across the jurisdictions, which will make it easier and more economical for all of the jurisdictions to do this if they want to. Um, I do want to note that the county also has a number of these tenant protections in their housing element policies and programs.
Liesel, we're we're out of time. If you can just wrap it up in a few seconds.
Right. So I just wanted to note that um you can talk, there are many people who are willing to talk to you more about this who are very knowledgeable in this area. Um, and I also want to note that although I think that you should take this up sooner, um, it's also could be important to consider some of these items in your housing element. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kevin Carroll.
Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening again. Um, most of, some of the questions that you've already asked are addressed in the letter that I submitted. And I think it would be a good way to start the conversation is to collect facts, which is what I essentially asked for in that letter. But one of the things I wanted to mention that's not in there is that all of you and the members of the Planning Commission, looking at your economic statements, it looks like you're all single-family homeowners. I didn't see where any of you are landlords, if you are, I stand corrected. But the bottom line is, is you don't quite have our point of view. And the reason I say that is you have probably, you're all pretty smart people. You have thirty-year federally subsidized home loans. What you paid last month for your mortgage payment is what you're going to pay next month, next year, five years, ten years, maybe up to thirty years. That doesn't apply to us as renters. Your property taxes and the landlords of the commercial properties are based on the initial purchase price. And it doesn't reflect the property's increasing value in the market until it is sold. Your rent is based on the ever-increasing market value of the property. Your property tax increases and the landlords are limited to two percent a year. Rent increases are currently capped at ten. You've got all these protections that none of the renters do. I can tell you, I've been on both sides. I was a homeowner, I'm now a runner. And that you get a sinking feeling that once or twice a year, when you get that extra thick envelope from your landlord, because you know what it is. It's a rent increase based on the market value of the property, which his costs, his two major costs, his mortgage payment and his property taxes are only going up two percent for the property taxes and not at all for the mortgage, probably. And I realize you don't understand that as property owners, but it's something we as renters have to live with, is that dreaded thick envelope. Thank you for consideration. I'm very encouraged by what I'm hearing tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. Very well spoken. Uh, next comment, please.
The next comment will come from Charlotte Ritchie.
Welcome, Charlotte.
Hi, uh, my my comment should be fairly quick. I just wanted to share my story um for a minute or two. My name is Charlotte Ritchie. I'm sixty-seven years old and I've lived at Skylark for over twenty-one years now. When I first moved to Skylark in two thousand and one, I was a hospice nurse working for Hospice of Marin, which eventually became hospice by the bay, and I remained there until two thousand and eight, when I became too ill myself to continue working. Around that time, I was deemed totally and permanently disabled by my Kaiser doctors that have remained so. The rent here remained reasonable for my situation for many years, but now it is climbing exponentially. And the next rent raise will likely be the last year I can stay here. Believe me when I say that there is nowhere to go from here. I have explored the options and therefore the very wealthy, and when they're not, there are six to eight-year waiting lists for senior housing. So um, yeah, I I and I wanted to say that, you know, one of my options is is I'm considering the End of Life Options Act of California because I have a feeding tube. And once I stop the feeding, I I I have the right to to end my life legally through through that program. But one of the reasons I'm considering it so seriously is because of these rent raises, because I am too sick to face dislocation, homelessness, et cetera. And um, so it's really, it's it's that much for some people. It's life-threatening. And um, you know, so I just asked that you for for the um rent control issue, that you really think about the disabled, the elderly, the lower-income people and other marginalized people that want to be able to stay in the Larkspur that we love at the Skylark Apartments, which has been a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you for sharing. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be from a call-in number with the last three numbers four zero two. Can I ask you to unmute?
Uh, James Holmes, Larkspur, just a quick note to say uh both how unique the Skylark situation is and yet how a similar situation may be on the horizon. As you know, the Skylark facility was long owned by uh the family that developed it in the sixties and and uh in recent years, they had no debt and consequently they could charge low rents. Well, a similar situation on a much larger scale exists across the creek. Let let me just put it this way. When I was in the Tamil Pious Convalescent Facility a couple of years ago, two doors down from me was the ninety-plus-year-old matriarch of the family that owns that huge complex. The Skylark issue you face may just be a dress rehearsal for what you may face when changes happen uh when that longtime family-owned multifamily operation changes hands. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, James. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Duncan McCandless.
Welcome, Duncan.
I have several um things I'd like to say. I I've been very, first of all, I so much appreciate your listening and taking these comments on board for consideration. I think they're really important. I've said that in two previous meetings. I was interested in the comment about the benches. And so that comes in very handy for what I'd like to say, because if you're considering spacing for people um of some years or with some disabilities and have that consideration, a much larger one, I think, is for the actual humans that sit on those benches. And I'm still potentially one of them because I'm mobile. But um I'm not so financially solvent that I can endure what everyone anticipates will be occurring here with yearly rent raises um at the maximum level of whatever the CPI is for that year. And I I would love to forego buying lottery tickets when I get my gas at that corner of the street um in hopes that I might win and then not have to give this such consideration. But I give give it consideration because it's been pulled out into the public forum, and I'm really glad to be part of it. And I'm very appreciative that you listen and that you give very, very careful consideration and preferably, as uh Councilman Haroff has suggested, treat it as a urgent thing because it comes in a period that is distinctly anomalous. Um, it's not just a smooth um twenty, twenty-five-year period as we've been um used to. We should really be on guard that these rapacious people that are out purchasing things at discount prices and um gleefully raising raising the the cost of them enormously or or the or the payment for them enormously. And apropos of hospice, I didn't get to read the article, but I think that the um private equity firms are even now involved in buying up hospices. So that gives you something to chew on and perhaps be rather not necessarily revolutionary, but very, very forward in your thinking about the kind of thing that is occurring and and doing what you can to dampen it or even put a stop to it in an equitable, fair way to all parties.
Thank you, Duncan. Uh, so just looking at the queue, I see somewhere around ten hands, which is twenty more minutes. And I've been pretty loose, but I'm going to start warning people again thirty seconds, just so we get to hear everybody. So next comment, please.
Next comment will be from Leslie.
Welcome, Leslie.
I have, I've been here the whole time and I'm going to try to pull up my uh public comment right now.
Sorry, go ahead, Leslie.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just trying to pull it up. All right. So this is what I wrote. City council members, we need rent control and we need it soon. We need half of the residents of Larkspur are renters. And because most of us could be priced out of it soon, we have, I have lived here happily at uh twenty-eight Skylark and do not want to be priced out of my home. Because uh, but but the corporation that owns, that bought Skylark has bought it and has implemented the highest possible rent increases that we have ever seen. I, they gave me an eight point eight percent increase. I am not probably the only single middle-aged woman who has medical issues um for whom this is increasingly dire. And so I'm asking you, one, we need rent control. We need, we need that. And two, we need to have additional cap on how landlords protect uh their their landlords. I I I can't read that.
Leslie, we're we're out of time. Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're out of time. But do you want to just say one or two sentences to close, please?
Yes, um, I love Skylark. I've lived here for twenty-eight years. And I don't want to leave and I want you guys to help me not leave it.
Okay, thank you very much, Leslie. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Anu Mather.
Hello. Hi, um, thank you so much, um, uh, city council for um taking the time to listen. Um, I have been a Marin renter for thirty-five years. Um, I'm a single parent who works two jobs. Um, I know the pandemic has hit us hard and many things, uh, including inflation has hit us hard, but um affording, uh being able to afford to live in a home in Marin is is becoming really difficult. Rent can, rent control could, would provide real housing security and stability for Larkspur renters. Rent control would keep our friends, our family, our neighbors in our homes and in our community. With home prices through the roof, the only way that many working families and young people and seniors on fixed incomes can make ends meet in Larkspur is to rent. We really urge you, city council, to adopt a process that reflects the urgency of our situation as renters struggling to make ends meet and stay in our homes. I really thank you for listening and considering for considering some action um as soon as possible for your rental community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anu. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Maddie Hirschfield.
Welcome, Maddie.
Hi, good evening. Um, good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for taking up this issue. Um, excuse me, sorry. Um, my name is Maddie Hirschfield. I'm with Um, excuse me, sorry. Um, my name is Maddie Hirschfield. I'm with the North Bay Labor Council. We cover Marin, Sonoma, Lake and Mendocino counties and we work a lot with low wage workers, um, those who we refer to as essential workers, uh, during the thick of the pandemic. They're the ones who kept us going, talking about grocery store workers, pharmacy workers, hospital workers, and not just nurses and doctors, but housekeeping, janitors. Um, and they're lo- largely, uh, low wage workers who struggle to pay rent and put food on the table. Uh, rent control would provide real housing security and stability for, for Larkspur renters. Some of the benefits, uh, reduces crime by keeping neighborhoods intact and, and reducing frequent rent turnover, boosts local schools by enabling consistent student attendance year round. Uh, it improves public health by avoiding stress and poor health related to repeated moving and rent stress. And it supports local businesses, um, which are patronized by long-term residents in the area who have money to, uh, to spend on, on goods and services. So, um, one of the things that North Bay Labor Council does is we fight for, uh, raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. And we all know that the living wage is actually much more than that. So, um, I really appreciate you taking this up this evening and I, I'm, uh, really moved by some of the, uh, the comment tonight. Uh, and I urge the council, um, to take up the issue of adopting rent control. Um, that would both stabilize rents and establish, uh, just cause conviction, I'm sorry, just cause eviction protections in Larkspur. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you Maddie. Maddie, can you, um, I think the organization was the, uh, North Bay, uh, Labor Council.
Okay, I just want to look up their stuff.
Scott, you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I was just saying, I'm, I'm looking at the list and it, it seems to perpetually be growing online.
Yeah.
I know a lot of people have been here, sitting here waiting to speak. Uh, I'm going to suggest maybe we switch over to the public that's here, uh, and let them speak and then go back. I know the people at home, you know, may be more comfortable in their homes and, you know, people here may not.
Yeah, so I, I do also see that the list has been steady at about ten people and I, I feel many of you are patient here. So, um, if that's okay with the rest of the council, why don't we let some people come up here who've actually made the effort to, to, you know, come all the way down to Chambers. So, uh, we'd like to, yeah, I mean, why don't we go for, you know, for a while here, at least ten, fifteen speakers? I think eight had raised their hands, so that might cover everybody. And if you can, uh, please lower the mic so we can hear you. And if you don't mind, just identify yourself and where you live. Thank you.
Hello, thank you so much. Um, my name is Deepa Varma. I'm actually, I work with, uh, tenants together, which is a statewide tenants rights organization. And I'm here because I actually got calls from Larkspur, from tenants who were afraid of losing their housing because of rent increases and changes to their leases. Um, we, um, we have a statewide hotline to help folks who don't, who can't get enough support where they are. And so we came to learn how dire the situation is here. Um, I'm here to help answer questions and to offer myself as a resource and our organization as a resource to help with a lot of the questions that you all raised. It was really heartening to hear that you are interested in stopping the bleeding, like making sure people keep their homes and look for a fair solution. And you're, it sounds like you're really thoughtful about that. And also want to make haste, which is I think the right thing to do here. Um, I wanted to just share a couple of points. One is, um, sixty percent of CPI is, um, used by a lot of cities that have rent control and the reason for that is because I think, as one of the speakers said, um, a lot of the landlord's costs are fixed. In addition to that, right now with, um, inflation, it's actually a little bit misleading because some of the reason for the inflation rates being what they are is because of the increase in rent itself. So it's sort of double counting. So just be aware of that and that a hundred percent is actually maybe not the fairest way to calculate what renters should be paying. Um, in addition, um, folks had asked about how to adjudicate and how to deal with the administration. Luckily, none of these questions are, 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 you're gonna, you're, you won't have to reinvent the wheel about any of this. Uh, there's many other cities that have done it. Um, I think it's another one of the speakers said, um, the costs that were listed in the letter that you got from the apartment association, those costs are generally covered by renters and landlords themselves. Sometimes it's split, usually it's, or, or it's landlords themselves. It does not go to the taxpayers. And dealing with this administration and making sure that rents are fair is a much cheaper solution than trying to deal with homelessness or other challenges that you might wind up having if people can't afford their rent. In addition, um, I want to just offer, there's legislation in multiple other cities. Um, I, we would be happy to share, um, copies of that. It sounds like there's already the Fairfax ordinance that, that you all have been looking at. We also, I also just wanted to share that, um, there are arguments that rent control already exists across the state and so why would we need that here? Clearly it's not enough for, as you're hearing from your own residents. There have been multiple cities in California that have passed rent control after that, uh, statewide protection, statewide cap was passed. Statewide cap was passed by my supervisor, not supervisor, my, um, assembly member, David Chu, um, who was representing San Francisco. The idea behind it was to, um, do a rent cap for the most extreme gouging with the expectation that's, that communities would pass their own controls that was stronger based on local needs.
Uh, Deepa, so, so we're out of time, but, um, I, I do think you'd be a great resource. So if, if you just want to say one more sentence or so, we do need, need to move on.
Sure thing. Um, the final thing that, uh, argument that sometimes is made is that not every renter will be protected or maybe we should limit it. I would urge you to protect every renter that you can. There are limitations already in the law. Exemptions at the state level saying that you can't, that single family homes and condos cannot be covered under rent control. Um, I would urge you to cover every renter that you can because, um, the situation is pretty out of hand across the, the state. And so, um, for every renter you cover is another person that you're keeping in your community's safety.
Great. Thank you so much.
Is it tenants together.org? Is that your, okay, I'm gonna look that up.
And, and I'm sorry, could I ask you to just, uh, write your contact information down and give it to, uh, to Shannon so we have that?
Yeah, or to the city clerk too.
Okay.
Great.
I'm the city clerk and I'm acting city clerk.
And I'm not the real mayor, I'm the acting mayor. We're all acting here tonight. Um, next speaker, please. Uh, if you want, just go ahead. You can form a line or you can just do it. And if you guys don't mind self-monitoring yourself when the orange starts blinking, it means, you know, try to wrap it up. Alright, so here we go. Yeah, you can, yeah, we're trying to make sure we hear everything, but not go too far. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
My name's Dorothy O'Leary and I want to thank you, city council members, for listening. I've lived at Skylark Apartment for five years. I'm single and I live alone with my cat. While, uh, I have been earning my living as a flight attendant, I attended graduate school. I rented a room, a small room in someone's house while I got my professional license, launched my practice and then wound down my flying career. So I'm now full-time a psychotherapist. Landing at Skylark, I finally have my own home while I'm able to save for the American dream of owning someday. I believe that mine is a success story, but the foundation for my success was pulled out from under me by a recent ten percent rent increase and the threat of continued exorbitant annual increases. A third of my psychotherapy practice is committed to clients who come to me via insurance plans, which pay a non-negotiable minimum fee to me. Next year's unchecked rent increases will force me to drop my insurance contracts and only accept business from the very wealthiest Marin residents who can afford to pay my full fee. I, and I suspect that you'd agree with me that mental health services need to be available to all and not just the most wealthy. The constant threat of Skylark's owners applying ten percent annual increases will not allow me to continue providing for insurance-based clients nor to accumulate any savings for myself, if not intervened by my elected officials within the coming year. This matter does require your immediate attention. Whether you're employed by someone else or you're self-employed, nobody gets a ten percent pay increase annually. But the state of California allows landlords to award themselves a ten percent pay increase annually, regardless of need. Rent increases do, do need to happen. I understand that. But they cannot exorbitantly outweigh my ability to increase my own income. Only you, my elected representatives, can implement an annual cap on rent increases based on inflation as has been done in other cities around the Bay Area. That cap will be of no use at all if you don't also establish just cause eviction protection to prevent arbitrary evictions and protect renters displaced due to no fault of their own. And Mr. Kendall, I'd like to let you know that Alameda County has a cap of five percent on their rent increases. The city of Berkeley has a cap of two percent and somehow or other, those landlords are getting through this inflation period. So I want you to know, we manage. And Councilmember Way, I trust that you will be able to clarify the boundaries of Larkspur. And I think that that is not a re- a rent, um, rent cap issue. That's something that will need to be defined in order to manage the city. Okay.
Great, thank you Dorothy.
Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's John Peretto and I live in Marin RV Mobile Home Park. I hear you guys talking a lot about a particular apartment complex. Well, Marin RV Mobile Home Park is no longer a cheap place to live and I'd just like you to keep in mind the RV parks as well as the apartment complexes and I'm really glad you're doing this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John. Uh, next speaker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bridgette Leeson and for the last thirty years, I've been a resident of the Marin Park Mobile Home Park. You have heard from me many times over the last several years on the same issue of rent control. I want to acknowledge and thank you tremendously, Councilmember Harhoff, for your willingness to be open-minded and rethink your position on these issues. And I want to suggest to the city manager that although mobile homes are different from apartments, mobile homes are a hybrid. We may own our homes, but we also rent our spaces and some laws around rent control can in fact apply to both. I've lived here and I raised my son here as a single parent and I love Larkspur and Puerto Madera and all the adjacent communities, wherever their borders may be. Um, and one of the things I love about this community, and I think all of you do also, is the diversity that exists here. And that diversity isn't going to be maintained if you don't take action on these issues. And I am so pleased to hear the movement that is so different than the first time we came to these meetings. Um, and as you look toward finding an expert to consult with you, which I think is a splendid idea, I want to recommend that we've heard tonight from, I think, three, maybe it was even four, different organizations that work on housing in this arena. We have several others as well. And I would certainly hope that you would turn to them for advice and counsel and consult with them about an appropriate expert. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you Bridgette. Good to see you again. Next speaker, please.
You think, uh, council members, thank you so much for holding this meeting and bringing this to the agenda. Um, I not only, uh, live in the community, I am also a manager at, um, Left Bank and Larkspur. So I live and work in the community. Um,
Can you, can you give us your name?
Evan Lingenthaler.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we unfortunately did undergo a ten percent rent increase, um, as I'm hearing it, the highest allowable in the state. And if it were to go ten percent yearly, which I think is the maximum, I mean, starting with a three thousand dollar rent per month, that'd be four thousand in three years. So that would be a thirty percent increase in three years and that is just drastic. And I do thank you so much, um, Councilmember Ken Hardoff, for, for, um, bringing this to, um, kind of, I believe you mentioned aggressive, um, motion. Um, I think that is necessary, um, to make sure that this does not happen in the following year. I know that as Ms. Catherine Way, you announced that kind of governancing between multiple towns in the area might be a way of going about it. That sounds cumbersome. It sounds like it might take a lot of time. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and thank you again.
Great, thank you Evan. Uh, anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Robin Jordan. Um, thank you for having us this evening.
Hey, Rob.
I can totally sympathize with Scott Kendall's, um, conflict of looking at it from both aspects of the renter and the property owner. Uh, while I am not a business owner, the position that I'm in professionally, I work very closely to business owners. So I sometimes think like they do and I understand, um, when prices increase as the owner of a business, um, you can't necessarily pass that entire price down to the customer. I, during the pandemic, I worked for a restaurant group in San Francisco and as if the pandemic wasn't hard enough, beef prices almost tripled in price. And we were already struggling, but we understood that we could not triple the price of the wagyu that we were serving at our restaurant because we were going to lose our most loyal customers. And that was a price that we were not willing to pay. So we understood as business owners that we had to absorb a certain amount of that and that we could only pass on a portion of that. And that's what I am asking as a renter, that only a portion of what the landowner is incurring be passed on to us. It's, we share the pie. We're all in this together. Um, my, and my rent increase, um, just came probably two weeks ago, ten percent. While I can make sacrifices as an adult, what hurts me most is that my daughter is going to have to make sacrifices. She's no longer going to be able to participate in sporting activities because I won't be able to afford them. And I could do that for one rent increase. I won't be able to do that for the second. I will have to leave Larkspur, which is a city that I love and my daughter has been raised here. So I would love to see action. Um, I can respect and appreciate the thoughtful, due diligent process it, as a quote unquote business owner. I understand due diligence, but it also needs to be something that happens, that there needs to be some urgency because I can't handle it a second year in a row. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for that. Okay, uh, next speaker, please.
Hi, um, I've never done this before. I'm a little nervous. Okay, um, I live at Skylark. I've been there for fourteen years.
Sorry, can you give us your name, please?
Oh, my name is Lark Calderon Gomez.
Hey, Mark.
I'm an artist. I'm part of the artist community. And, um, that's one of the things also that, I mean, the first things to go when rents increase is kind of the artist community, like San Francisco, you know, they get priced out. And now San Francisco is a completely different place, you know? When we let this sort of thing happen, Larkspur is going to lose their cultural arts. They're going to lose a lot, you know? And we're trying to hold on, but we just got hit with a ten percent rent increase. And, um, we could probably maybe last another year or two by the skin of our teeth. You know, we just also bought a Tesla. So we're trying to be environmentally, um, you know, but then just life is just, um, kind of taken over. But anyway, I wanted to say really quick that I also used to work at an art center called Artworks Downtown in San Rafael. Yeah, and there were eighteen are, um, low in cost, low income housing apartments um, in the unit, in the, in the facility. And, um, I don't know if Larkspur has low income housing. I don't know, you know, but I, I'm just, I, I just know for myself that, um, we can't afford to stay here more than like a year or two. And I don't want to leave. I've been here fourteen years. I love it. And, um, and it's gonna, if it keeps going, it's gonna change the face of Larkspur.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for those comments. Okay, uh, next speaker. Yeah, let me just see. It looked like that's maybe the amount, but please, if anybody wants to speak, don't be bashful. You can see there's no, uh, please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sheri Paula and I've been living in Skylark for twenty-six years. My daughter enjoyed the school systems and they were great. Now she's in the career of her choosing. And my husband is, he works in the community. He's a waiter. my husband is, he works in the community. He's a waiter. And um, he works in Tiburon now. He used to work in Left Bank. And um, I am disabled, and we live on his salary essentially, and my social security disability. And um, we also will not be able to stay much longer at this rate. 10% increase and an additional, and an additional, and an additional. Um, which I'm afraid of. And um, as far as, I've heard it already, um, Larkspur will change, and it'll be like the city. It will be priced out. Um, and it's just really sad. It's really sad. This has been my community for twenty-six years. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening, and I hope there is some action that gets taken really soon. Have a good one.
Thank you, Sheri. Uh, anybody else last call, then we'll go back online. Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, um, my name's Elif Kimiajolo. I'm actually here um, from Prime Residential. Um, you know, I'm just introducing myself to everybody in this room. Um, we are really, really um, happy to be here. Thank you for having us here. And we're happy to engage directly with our residents, you know? We, and I'm talking to everybody here because I, I think it's really important that we have direct engagement with our residents. I will say, you know, I think we've been trying to keep track in uh, the speakers that we have heard, and this is, you know, speaking on behalf of um, my department, we actually have, um, I'll just let everyone know onsite. We have a team that's dedicated to talking to our residents. Our senior vice president, Lisa Castro, is here. She's on asset every week. Um, you know, we have a community concern department that's dedicated literally to engaging with our residents, and these speakers are speakers that, from my understanding, have not engaged with that department, so we welcome that. You know, we did write a letter, and I know I don't have much time, but I just did want to say, I think there is a lot of confusion here about what the current state affairs are with respect to the protections, but also with respect to where Skylark rents are and what Prime is doing to help residents, because Skylark rents are locally below market. I mean, we're talking about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars below market, and but, I'm sorry, may I, I'll finish speaking, and we're happy to engage with you.
All right ma'am, if you, if you don't mind, let's not turn this into a cross talk, just uh, we can get your information, but um, you've got about thirty seconds.
Yeah, my, my point is, is that we're, we are working with Marin County Housing Authority to make sure that our one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms are available for Section 8 housing. We're, we're working to make sure every resident has applied for every dollar of rental assistance, and we just think a robust discussion is very important. I'm very alarmed by rushes to judgment on this issue, because I do think there's a lot of third parties here who have also co-opted this issue a little bit. We think direct engagement with the residents is, is really the best way to go. We, we ask and solicit the city councils help on that, and I would also ask that the council um, hear from Lisa Castro or SDP, who can speak to the very positive interactions we've had with our residents once we're able to speak to them.
Okay, sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for that comment.
So you did, I, I know they, you submitted a letter, and it's in our public process, and it's online, available for anybody to read if you need her contact information. It's on our agenda item under the packet. If you need help accessing that, because you did submit a two or three-page letter, and I just want to make sure everyone knows that it's there for.
Yeah, and can you repeat your name so it's easy to find?
Sure, it's Elif Kimiajolo. It's E-L-I-F, as in Frank.
Okay.
But the letter says Prime on it, so.
Got you, got you.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and then someone else? Sure. And I do appreciate you guys showing up. I mean, that's part of this process is to hear from everybody, so please.
Hello, I'm Lisa Castro. I'm the senior vice president of uh, with Prime. I've been there with them for eighteen years, and I represent nineteen properties throughout the Bay. Skylark is one of our newest acquisitions. We took it over in February. And you know, since that time, I'm at the property on a regular basis. Currently, I've been there for three days this week. I've been there for resident events, and I just want to encourage everybody that we're there to talk with them, to try to help work through the issues and provide, you know, housing that they enjoy and benefits for them. So I, I, some of the folks in the room, I've seen throughout the property walking around, and most recently, even as of today, I've engaged with several residents who've come up and said, "Thank you for what you're doing. They appreciate, they know me by name. I know them by name." And I just think that they're not represented here today, and it's a, you know, it's a situation we need to work through, but we are there, and I am personally there on a continuous basis to engage and meet with the residents.
Great, thank you Lisa. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I've been at Skylark for thirty years. Oh, Joan Weinberg.
Thank you, John.
And um, the first three years I lived there, there was no rent increase. And it was $25 on a thousand dollars. It's two and a half percent. Then it was $50 the next year, and it was $75 the next year, and then there was no increase for about eight years. It's not what's going on here. My, because I got my rent increase in July, I lucked out, and I got 8.8%. Not the 10% that you're hearing. August started at 10%. It's gonna be every year. I've had a roommate the last ten years. And my present roommate of six years just told me she's leaving. Sorry. You're crying. Um. This is the longest I've ever lived anywhere. Don't want to move. One more year. And I'm looking for a roommate. I'm in building fourteen, apartment three oh three, and um. So, um, these increases are unconscionable. And I am older. I retired two years ago. And um, at the age of seventy-one. And I think it's just not the way the pals would have wanted this to happen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Okay, uh, anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Katina Griffin. Thank you for doing this meeting.
Hi Katina.
Um, I'm one of those people that is amidst everybody here with a 10% increase that was given to me last week. Um, I've been up since five. I have to work it up at five tomorrow to now this $300 a month increase for me, just for this year, is gonna make it so that I need to build in four more hours of work each day in order to stay. So Prime doing um, their, their communications to me via the portal have been about the shrubbery and the things, this new signage, and the things that they're adding to the property. And I'm cutting back groceries so that I can afford that 300 extra dollars a month in hopes that I can stay and stay in the fitness industry, which has been severely, uh, the tapestries shifted forever. Uh, we are now seen as a elective um, or, you know, not something that people need, even though I teach people to sit properly so they don't have back issues and repair their Achilles tendon tears and things like that. So I just hope that not, it's not gonna work for me. I'm not gonna be here in Larkspur. Um, I've been here for eighteen years, but I'm not gonna be here any longer. Um, because I probably can make it another three months. People have been talking about a year. I can, I, choosing the higher, you know, the, the electives were, you know, these are the here are your, you know, options, and um, my option, I'm gonna have to take the more expensive 10% option because all of the additional increases within the 8.8% increase will put me over the edge, so I'll see if I can make it work another one or one to three months, but I just hope for you guys that you it, it's, it's, the urgency is it, it's, it's incredible. It's really incredible, and actually, I don't think that you can get ahead of it in time to save some of the people that are in this room even. So I just wish you the best, and thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you, Katina. Anybody else? Okay, and you can certainly, we'll come back to the room if, if anybody wants to, you know, speak later. Um, it looks like we have quite a number of hands.
A number of hands, a number of folks who've already spoken have raised their hands again, per the direction received earlier. I'm going to remove the, I'm gonna lower those hands, so we can keep an eye on the queue if that's all right.
Yes, that's, yeah, just in the interest of time.
And again, folks who spoke are welcome to send public comment and writing as a follow-up.
Yes. Yeah, we, we have received fourteen public comments as of this afternoon. We do read them and actually will reread them. So, so uh, you are being heard, you know, through the online submission, but it's really powerful to have you here in the room or online, so let's try to hear everybody, and Shannon, if you could.
Just wanted to let those know, some folks first council meeting. All right, so uh, the next speaker is going to be DSA line three.
Hi.
Hi, sorry about that. Uh, wrong account, but this is um, well, the right account in some ways. My name's Kurt Reese. Uh, I'm a renter in San and Salmo, and the co-chair of the Marin Democratic Socialists of America, or DSA. And I'm also a lead organizer for our campaign, our campaign to pass rent control in Marin. Uh, we've been hard at work in Fairfax and San and Salmo, and are now partnering with the Skylark Tenants Association in Larkspur. Um, if I'm able to get a little extra time representing an organization, I'd appreciate it, but I'll try to do my best to be concise. Um, so essentially, over the course of this campaign, we've had to become quite uh, familiar with rent control and just cause eviction policies and the details of what it takes to administer a rent control program. Um, we would also uh, lend our, our expertise and kind of uh, advice as the process moves forward, but I think the main thing I just wanted to touch on tonight is that um, Larkspur can absolutely administer its own rent control program at the local level. There's no need for it to happen through the county, as I believe the mayor uh, um, argued for at the last meeting and has been floated this evening as well. And so just to touch on two points briefly, the common argument that we've heard over and over again is that well, rent control is too expensive to implement, number one, and number two, it's too burdensome for the city to administer. And on the first point, I'm echoing what a couple other speakers have said, just to be clear, uh, rent control programs are, are revenue neutral for the city. It would not entail new taxes. It would not take any money, money from the general fund. It will be paid for using an extremely modest annual housing fee charged to the city's landlords. And to get a ballpark idea of these numbers, um, if Larkspur were to charge uh, the city's landlords $120 per unit or ten thousand, or $10 per month, per unit, um, it would raise well over $300,000 in annual revenue. And again, this is charging $10 per month for units that are, that in a, in a rental market where landlords are routinely charging two, $3,000 or more. Um, so incredibly reasonable fee for an enormous benefit for the, for the town's renters. Um, that brings us to the second question, which is uh, this idea that it might be too burdensome to administer. And there's two points here. Number one is that obviously, if you're bringing in a, a large new revenue source, you can pay for additional staff capacity. But there's also another option, which is to contract the bulk of required administrative services out to trusted third parties with expertise on the issue, and this is what Fairfax is electing to do. They're, uh, the council and staff are creating a proposal whereby Legal Aid of Marin will be responsible for direct, uh, directly kind of interacting with tenants and landlords to answer their questions, help them fill out forms, et cetera, hold educational workshops. And the Brit, and they're contracting with the Berkeley Rent Board to provide hearing examiner services.
Kurt, Kurt, uh, just real quick, I, I think a lot of these points are great, and we probably will want to reach out to you. Can you sum up in a sentence or two?
Yeah, no problem. Essentially, um, the, I think the question before you all is, is not how, can we do this? Is it possible? The answer is yes. Uh, the real question is, is should we, and I hope you answer that uh, in the affirmative as well, and please do reach out.
Great, thank you so much, Kurt. Okay, uh, next speaker, Shannon, please.
The next speaker is Ravi Lin Antonio.
Welcome, Ravi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Ravi Lin Antonio, and I work with local housing providers, many of which are family-owned and operated. Larkspur should avoid any proposals or policies that would discourage the investment of housing, especially in a place where housing is desperately needed. I want to emphasize that Larkspur already has rent control. That is through AB 1482, and rents are capped at 5% plus CPI. Please recognize that when the legislature adopted the cap, it was done so with a broad-based coalition of stakeholders that included renters and housing providers. That cap was determined to ensure that renters are not being gouged, but most importantly, the state of housing in California does not deteriorate due to price regulations. The current cap allows for flexibility in certain market conditions for owners to maintain their properties, perform property improvements, and limit rent increases up to no more than the legal limit of 10%. One of the unintended consequences of rent control is that the quality of housing is compromised when you over-regulate rental rates. Substantial rehabilitation and structural improvements won't pencil out. Housing providers will grow reluctant to update the units when they can't afford to do so because they are being forced to keep rents at what they were pre-renovations. And after hearing tonight's comments from mainly residents of the Skylark Apartments, and reading the staff report of what led us here tonight, a better approach is to study how to give targeted help to those who are rent burdened without compromising the quality of homes in Larkspur. Low-income renters have resources, such as the Housing Authority, to assist with rental assistance through voucher programs like Section 8. This is a true affordable housing strategy, since the Housing Authority focuses help on those who are financially struggling because it is means-tested. Please avoid enacting citywide regulations based on isolated issues. Housing in Larkspur and Marin County is already hard to come by. Please do not add any more policies that would send the message that housing providers are not welcome in Larkspur. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ravi. Yeah, I, I will have to reach out again. I didn't get that. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Joshua Howard.
Welcome, Joshua.
Good evening, Vice, excuse me, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Joshua Howard with the California Apartment Association. I think it's important to recognize that back in 2019, when Governor Newsom signed AB 1482, it was credited as the strongest statewide renter protection measure in the United States. It offers a clear protection from renters, from rent gouging, and protections for all renters from evictions. Local governments no longer need to go through this exhaustive process to study whether or not rent control makes sense, or they need eviction protections. Eviction, eviction protections are in place. Rent protections are in place. AB 1482 took effect on January 1st, 2020. Less than ten weeks later, COVID hit. Eviction moratoria, rent freezes, were enacted. We have really had no real opportunity to see the full effects of AB 1482. Now, we understand the desire to understand and aid long-term renters. Tools are already in place, including AB 1482, including the county's own mediation program. It is also important to understand the scope of what you can do. Of approximately the 3,000 renter households in Larkspur, more than 55% are likely single-family homes, condominiums, and townhomes that would be exempt from any form of local price controls because of state law. And it's important to note today that we need housing providers to invest and improve in aging housing stock to preserve those units for, for now and into the future. The state legislative analyst even opined in 2016 that rent control discourages investment and leads to lower-quality housing. The California Apartment Association has worked in cities across the state, working with cities to develop enhanced communication programs, enhanced mediation programs, and programs that ensure renters know their rights. Renters have the opportunity to discuss their concerns with their landlords and safe places for landlords and tenants to resolve disputes.
Uh, Joshua, we're, we're out of time. If you can just wrap it up, please.
What I would say is that the California Apartment Association is here to be a resource to the city of Larkspur, and we look forward to working with you in a collaborative way, and in a way that leads to a result that does not discourage investment in housing or creates new costly programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joshua. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lucy Hollingsworth.
Welcome.
Uh, good evening. I'm Lucy Hollingsworth, a senior attorney at Legal Aid of Marin and a member of Marin Organizing Committee. Marin is losing its naturally occurring affordable housing at a record pace, and Larkspur is no different. The state rent cap is currently 10%. In the words of the esteemed author of AB 1482, formerly, former Assemblyman Chu, "This is the best we could do, and we know it is not enough." Do the math, an annual 10% rent increase on the average two-bedroom rental in Marin is approximately $320 per year. It's not sustainable for Larkspur's low-income tenants, who are disproportionately represented by people of color, seniors, persons with disabilities, and single-parent households. Larkspur is also facing households. Larkspur is also facing a housing element cycle that requires the town to affirmably further fair housing by in part protecting low income tenants and preserving the naturally occurring affordable housing that currently exists. A rent stabilization program would go far to meet this obligation. Without a commitment to tenant protections, a housing element will be rejected. The majority of Legal Aid of Marin's resources are devoted to defending tenants from eviction, and this is because the need is so incredibly high. We have been inundated with calls from Larkspur tenants. They are seniors in the same rental units for decades whose fixed incomes are now forcing them out into a changed rental market that they will never be able to afford. They are single parents that face uprooting their children and moving away from their support system. There are tenants that have been living on the edge for years because their housing costs were too high, sacrificing their ability to save for emergencies such as a pandemic. The consistent theme from all these callers is a valid and real fear of homelessness. Larkspur must come through for these tenants who are also your neighbors and also your friends. We are committed to working in partnership with Larkspur to develop a program that is financially realistic in compliance with the obligation to affirmably furthering fair housing, and will go far to preserve housing for Larkspur's low income residents. Please refer to my letter in your board packet with more detailed information, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucy. And yeah, thanks for submitting that letter. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anil Babar.
Welcome, Anil.
Hi, Council and Mayor. Anil Babar, I work with a lot of housing providers in the area. And, you know, what we've constantly seen is the disastrous impacts that rent controls had on, on properties in, in our community. We need to understand that 1482 has done the job of what many of the activists here you here today have called preservation and protection. Now we need to focus on production. We really need to focus on building more housing. Larkspur has arena numbers that they have to meet. Enacting any kind of rent control will have a disastrous impact on the city's ability to attract the investment that the city desperately needs to build that housing. I would encourage you to focus your efforts on production and only on production because that's what the city needs. That's the key to lowering the cost of housing is to have more housing. And I think that this is a conversation that is just taking up the time from the council and focusing on more important things. I would also like to point out that I've heard comments today about from others who have said that, you know, we need rent control because my income's being impacted. Well, the income of many owners are being impacted as well. And they need to, we all need to understand that the rent control has the disastrous impact on all, on all sides of the community. And we need to focus on really just the production. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak, and good night.
Thank you, Anil. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kate Flan.
Yeah, good evening. And I really appreciate the council and the vice.
Kate, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, but if you could maybe adjust your audio settings a little bit, you're coming across a little muffled in council chambers.
How, is that any better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay. So I just wanted to thank you all for, for listening. And I mean, I really appreciate the complexity of the issue for tuning in and hearing all of this. I have a little different situation. I've been at Lark, at Skylark for a year only. I moved here from Richmond after commuting for 10 years to my place of work at Marin General, now now called Marin Health Medical Center, because I wanted to get closer to my place of work. And when I moved here, it was because colleagues at Marin Health Medical Center had raved about the place and thought it was very safe and a place where I could stay for a while. And at this point, given the 8.8% increase, I'm single, and I don't have a nurse's income. I actually work at the Integrated Wellness Center, the Cancer Center, at Marin Health Medical Center. As a body worker, I work with a community of members and patients from our area who are ongoing, who are dealing with, you know, devastating diagnosis and cancer therapies and recoveries. I work with them in the outpatient clinic and in the hospital. I also.
Okay, sorry, we only have a couple, maybe 10 seconds. So if you can just wrap up, please, I'd love to hear more, but.
Okay. The point I'm trying to make is that there are individuals who live in the community and are renting, who are contributing immensely to the community, who will not be able to stay and will have to move on and find other places to do their work, which is going to be my situation. I can, I can maybe, maybe stay a year, but I will not be able to stay more.
Thank you so much, Kate. So I'd like to just take a brief step back. We're at 8:44, and it looks like we have about eight speakers, and the list keeps growing. Shannon, are there, how many people have not spoken who are on that list? You've, have you removed all hands of the people who've spoken before?
Best of my knowledge, yes. We have seven speakers who I don't believe have spoken.
Okay, great. And if it's okay with the council, I think I'm going to reduce the time to one minute. And, yeah, I mean, we really want to, you know, process a lot of this, and there's been a lot of information. And, you know, some of it's a little bit, you know, it's repeating now. So if we can go to the next speaker, one minute, and I am going to be stricter now with, with time limits. So next speaker, please.
And the next speaker is Larkspur resident.
Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Jocke. Sorry about the, the name. For some reason, it didn't register my name. I am a resident of Larkspur. I've been at Skylark since 2009. I wanted, a lot of my neighbors have already said the things that we're all concerned about, but I specifically wanted to just say that the process of speaking and, and engaging in, in mutual conversation with our landlord is something that majority of the residents, actually, we signed a petition, that 222 of Skylark residents actually signed a petition requesting prime management to speak with us. And we have yet to hear from them about a time that we can meet. So we're coming to the city council because we are, it's dire. We're going to lose our homes. We're going to be forced out of our homes. So just to kind of echo what Councilmember Harv said, there needs to be a radical step that's taken because for somebody like me, I won't be able to survive more than another three months, especially.
Thank you. That's one minute. And yeah, I noticed that there are two people here from Prime, so maybe we can close the loop somehow. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kyle Amsler.
Welcome, Kyle.
Hi, council members. My name is Kyle Marie. I'm a renter living in San Onofre, and I'm an essential healthcare worker at a children's hospice that serves children all out, all throughout the Bay Area, including Marin. I'm an active volunteer with Marin DSA's campaign to pass rent control in Marin. To reiterate, our campaign is calling for rent control ordinances that cap rent increases annually at 60% of CPI or 5%, whichever is lower, and that establish strong just cause eviction protections that protect renters who are evicted due to no fault of their own, and that provide additional protections for vulnerable populations like the terminally ill, who I work with, people with disabilities, teachers, students, and seniors. And I wanted to point out, our campaign is being advised by Leah Simon Weisberg, who's the legal director for the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. She's chair of the Berkeley Rent Board and author of numerous California rent control ordinances. She provided us with the model ordinance that we're using in Fairfax. And we believe she'd be happy to work with you. So you can learn more about how to do this. And I'm sure Mayor Stephanie Hellman would be happy to talk with you as well about what we're doing in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, pal. Okay, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Julie Neustatter.
Welcome, Julie.
Julie, we, Julie has removed themselves from the queue. So if they rejoin the queue, I'll allow it.
Okay, next speaker.
So the next speaker is a call in number. That's last two numbers is 75.
Welcome.
Yes, good evening. My name is Emilio Pimera, and I'm a resident over at the Skylark Apartments. I must congratulate you all in the panel of City Council. You guys are, are really doing what it takes in order to find an adicable solution to what the issues of rent control are. And some of the issues that the group of Skylark keep finding with this new company that is called Prime, it is very interesting, and it is an emergency, really, what this panel is about. And I have to say thank you very much to all of you. And please, keep doing that great work. I know we are going to come up with something really wonderful in order to save most of our people here in the area of Larkspur, Larkspur, and hopefully in the whole Marin County. Thank you.
Thank you for the encouragement. It looks like we have three more speakers. Next speaker, please.
Hang on, the queue seems to be changing. Folks are coming back online and going offline. So the next speaker is Sarah Bermudez.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, thank you for taking me. I'll keep this pretty short and sweet. I've lived at Skylark for seven years. I work from home. I walk my dog probably four or five, four or five times a day around the block. I'm a very friendly person. I love my neighbors. I was raised on community. Just want to talk about the, the women from Prime. I have never seen them ever on the property. I've never seen them in the office. I've never seen them introducing themselves. Just want to let you know that that's kind of the vibe these days, and I've been really unhappy with Prime's communication and treatment towards the Skylark residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. It looks like our last speaker, Kate.
Yes. Hi there. This is Caitlin Lamott. I'm also a resident at Skylark. And I just wanted to throw this out there in full disclosure. I've heard some comments about providing rental assistance and things like that. But I would just like you to know, I've moved into the unit in 2019 at a very high rate. I'm a single woman. I live at home, work from home. And I'm above 30% in my rent right now. So, you know, I design, I'm a healthcare designer for an architecture firm. It's not just low income people who are struggling here. It's, I mean, very soon, we're all going to be priced out. So just wanted to throw it out there that it's not just low income, and not everyone is in the position to have rental assistance, because I'd make too much money to have rental assistance. So just wanted to make sure that that was also crystal clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. And it looks like that's the last. I'll just ask one more time in the room. Anybody wants to speak? Sure.
Again, my name's Dorothy O'Leary, and I just want to say that I heard the representatives from Prime talk about wanting to aid us with finding public assistance. I don't want public assistance. I really don't. I want to live within my means. I want to earn a good living and pay a reasonable rent. I don't want to go on the dole, and I'm not asking for a handout. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you, Dorothy. Thank you for that. And I really want to thank everybody here. There have been so many insightful, heartfelt, and, and I've written down every comment I've heard tonight. And I know my fellow council members are equally, you know, engaged and really looking for a solution. So if I may, I'd like to bring it back to the council for any comments. Oh, and I guess formally to close public comment right now and bring it back to the council. Okay, one more, sure. Okay, just remember 11 o'clock.
I live at Marine Park. I've been there for about four years.
Sure. What's your name, sir?
I see.
I'm sorry.
I see.
I see. Okay, got you.
Yeah. The park owners have been nice to my family. Luckily, we haven't had the 10% rates, but I can see that being a problem for us and other families that live in the park. We have small children. Most of us work in the community, either safely, treated jobs, or and send our kids to local schools. So seeing that might be a problem for us, for us Latinos. We have a big Latino community there. And a lot of us are not here because not all of us speak English. So I just want to want you guys to keep in mind that there's families that are also going to be affected, Latino families that are not able to be here and that are also have some fears about speaking out for several reasons. So, yeah, and I want to thank you if you guys could see there are robust rent control.
Great. Thank you, Ansi. And thank you for representing. So it's good to hear more and more points of view. So let's close public comment and bring it back.
I just want to bring it to the council's attention. There's now an additional comment virtually from someone who hasn't spoken. Would you like to take the comment, or would you like to close?
Um, what does the council think? Yeah, perhaps that can be submitted online. And we do read, again, I saw all 14 comments, and I know my fellow council members did and will read these. Yeah. So, so we'll, we'll close public comment now. And respectfully, just in the interest of time and more business items coming. So let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Any, any comments, any thoughts? Scott?
Sure. All right. So let me start by thanking everybody. I came here with a very open mind. You know, I wanted to hear what people had to say and suggestions, things of that nature. I feel, well, let me ask a question to our staff. It is my understanding that there are emergency ordinances that can be passed kind of spontaneously, as long as they are less than a year in effect. They don't require a second reading. They're temporary. I think the first time it's good for a month, and the second time it can be good for a year. Could you correct me if I am misunderstanding that?
That is correct. The city council can adopt an interim ordinance based upon certain findings that will be in effect initially either for 45 days or for a year, depending on whether or not it's going to be hearing. There's also the ability to adopt, adopt a emergency ordinance in the immediate presentation of public safety. Well, there also requires findings that there is an imminent threat to public health and safety that require immediate action. Two different paths is just wanting to round out the answer, though, since rent stabilization is in people in the immediate areas, the proceedings under isolation because there's going to be, that findings associated with it, that those findings will be needed for immediate action through the present additional area.
So let me, let me see if I'm understanding what you just said. Hypothetically, if the city council were so inclined, and they said, we are finding a immediate public safety risk based on potential evictions due to rent increases, and we wanted to have an immediate rent freeze, hypothetically, and we wanted that to last for 45 days to give us a chance to speak with property owners and interested parties. And that could either then be extended, or we can pass an ordinance after that. Would that be unadvisable by our city attorney due to potential litigation exposure? Or would we be able to make sufficient findings based on our hearing today that there is a public, an immediate public safety risk? Okay, if instead it was a rent stabilization ordinance instead of a rent freeze, would that, would you give us a different answer?
So.
To your point, I think I I understand where you're trying to go with there, but many of the residents we heard from Skylark have already received their August first for a year. So I don't know how well, how the urgency, because it many of them have already received their notification.
I I understand, but many people haven't. Uh and I think many people may lose their housing if they're not protected. And quite frankly, uh it feels like uh there is a inequity in power uh in this situation. And as the city council, I think we have the ability and the obligation, you know, to protect people who need to be protected. And I I think that's what's actually before us right now. And I think if we were to pass something, there is a significant possibility that the interested parties would come to the table. And within a short period of time, we would be able to work something out and pass an ordinance that would get support from both property owners and tenants. And I think that's the only way I could think of to to make that happen. So that is why I am coming out there and looking for opinions from my fellow council members.
Yeah, maybe um Catherine and Kevin, if you want to, go ahead. You want me to go?
I started out my comments this evening stressing my view of the importance of acting promptly and robustly. And I want to reiterate those comments. Um I think we have uh more work to do, which we can do in short order, but I'm not prepared to do it tonight. You know, the there is a there's a staff, not necessarily a recommendation, but an alternative that has been suggested that we form, which we can do now, an ad hoc committee of members of this council to address this issue and come up with a robust resolution promptly in ways that will respect everyone's interests and not delay this process unduly. I think that's a good idea.
So my
Could I finish my comments, please? Thank you. Um I, my suggestion is that this council form an ad hoc committee of two of its members. I don't care which ones, although I'm happy to do it. Uh to meet on an expeditious basis to discuss what our options are and to also discuss the retention or engagement of necessary experts to make sure that what we come up with is not going to be inequitable. Um and is also not going to subject the city to unnecessary litigation risk. So I think that's the best outcome of this discussion, and I would frankly oppose any other direction that might be suggested. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. Uh Catherine?
I think we also saw in our um our comment letters that there are organizations like Legal Aid of Marin, et cetera, who are offering their services to understand better. I I think we have a lot to learn. I mean, I admitted I I took copious notes because I don't know a lot of this information and I think it's really important that we learn it and learn it together so that we have the best outcome. Not only for our renters, but um for our citizens and um others who are in our in our community. So I would I I would agree with that, having an ad hoc committee that works expeditiously. I see Fairfax has already had their meeting in September happening. Um I can't volunteer for it, um so one of my other council members will need to, and maybe the mayor could, but I'm on too many committees at this moment to manage um an additional one, so, but I'll support um the contribution of of learning to it. Yeah.
Good. Uh Scott, anything else?
Yeah, um my concern is by having this meeting and telegraphing that we're considering a rent stabilization ordinance that everybody who has not gotten a ten percent increase will get it tomorrow. So that when we come up with our ad hoc committee and come up with our decision, everyone will have already gotten their ten percent rent increase and there will be nothing we can do. So my feeling is that if it were possible to have a temporary freeze so that we can discuss this, and if we discuss this and we decide as a city council that we don't want rent control, so be it. And in three months, we, you know, the freeze ends and people can do what they want to do, or if we decide in three months that we want it to be X percent, then so be it. But if we do nothing today and then three months from now, we come up with what we want, I just want to put out there that there is a distinct possibility that things will be different three months from now than they are today. So that that was the reason that I was suggesting that we consider doing some type of freeze immediately as an emergency as opposed to having a committee first and then uh figuring it out later.
Okay, um so, yeah, and so that that's really where I wanted to go. Um so it looks like we've had uh suggestion for an ad hoc, suggestion for more information, suggestion for a possible urgency ordinance. Um and a city manager, you wrote a staff report, but we've had, you know, I logged thirty-four comments here and a lot of, you know, different perspectives. Perhaps you can enlighten us on some of the options we have tonight.
Couple of responses that maybe briefly comment is I understand the current law. You can't be subjected to more than one rent increase in a twelve-month period. So I I understand Councilmember Candell's concerns. Those would probably in are valid for some segment of the population of renters, but not everybody. And I don't have any data to tell you how many people are in that potential risk. I offer that only because I share the city attorney's concerns that an urgency ordinance might be a little difficult to defend in this circumstance. As I understand the general discussion from the council, I would probably advise the appointment of an ad hoc committee this evening. I would suggest there be direction to the ad hoc committee to work with the city manager and the city attorney to identify the specific topics that need to come back. With all due respect to my colleagues in other cities and the speakers this evening, uh we have a longstanding history of finding neutral third parties to advise the council and we would like to have that uh discretion. I think a lot of the experts offering advice should be identified as stakeholders and then invited into the process in that capacity. But when I proposed that you get an expert, I think you need to get somebody where you can feel comfortable that whatever you pass, you receive neutral third-party assessment of the pros and cons of what you're electing to do. And I caution, I'm and I'm not diminishing any of the speakers this evening, but you heard a heavy dose of one perspective. And one of the reasons we encourage the council to think about scheduling some well-known of noticed meetings is you might have other perspectives in the community who aren't even aware that you had this conversation this evening. That's a common complaint that's caused other totally unrelated processes to come to a stop because we felt we had to go back and feel we did our due diligence in notifying everyone in our community what the potential activities of the council might result in for them. So my advice this evening is to point appoint an ad hoc committee, give that ad hoc committee direction to work with us as expeditiously as possible. I would also suggest that the ad hoc committee be assigned a standing agenda item to report at every council meeting on the progress that it's making. And then your staff will turn around, we'll do our best to to come up with as fast a timetable as we can to work forward. Um and if it is the council's interest, we will continue to analyze what urgency I actions you may or may not take, uh want to take. And the city attorney can work on what the legal risks are, uh the different options that might be available to you. Also, you had speakers this evening who are from a mobile home park. Uh I want to emphasize again, if you also want to pursue that, you should be really clear because one of the speakers suggested incorrectly that you could do one action for both. You can't you can simultaneously do rent control for both. That's different. And I need clarity on if that's what you want to do because the legal issues around rent control under the mobile home park law is different than the legal issues around rent control in multi-unit dwellings. So I would also want some clarity on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um so it sounds like we've had a couple of suggestions for a uh ad hoc committee, and I personally think that's a great idea. Um Kevin and I served on one in twenty nineteen. And you know, there was a lot of value I found in that. So does the rest of the council feel prepared? You know, we don't have Mayor Helmer here tonight, but do you feel prepared to to move to to start that ad hoc committee?
Yes, this is Kevin and I am, and I would be happy to participate in that ad hoc committee and have it convene its actions as soon as possible.
Okay, great. So we have uh Kevin willing to serve. Uh Scott, is that something you want to do or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. If you want to, I would defer to you. It's your choice.
Okay, um I so I mean, it sounds like we have at least two members and a possible backup and, you know, I I just want to check in with Mayor Helmer if he if he has strong feelings. I mean, it sounds like you and I are both willing, so we would have a committee, Kevin's. Sounds very committed.
I appreciate your desire to reach out to the mayor, but he's not here this evening. And since I heard a sense of urgency, I would actually encourage you to make an appointment this evening.
Okay, understood, understood. Um so I think um yeah, I I mean, I'm just having worked on this before and, you know, being in the housing element and having with Kevin, I'm feel like I, you know, feel called to do this, but okay, so Kevin and I, I think will be uh the two members on this and we could form that committee tonight if that's it's a council. Okay, and and then I think uh one of your additional uh suggestions, uh city manager, was that the next city council meeting, which we won't have in August, which is in September, would actually be reporting out on on some of our findings or not, I wouldn't use the word findings, but on on what activities uh have occurred. Is that correct?
We'll make that a standing item.
Okay.
Uh also, for the purpose of public disclosure, because the council has expressed to me a desire to move expeditiously in sense of urgency, we will not go through a normal process to find a consultant. We will probably go through a solicitation of two or three proposals and just select one to advise us rather than a longer or uh drawn-out process to find you somebody.
Okay, I appreciate that. And and I I do think that uh, yeah, that that sounds that sounds like we'll have some more information and we don't have a council meeting yet. For those of you here, those who are still listening, this is our only August meeting, so uh you know, Kevin and I have done this before. We'll need to do our homework, but hopefully come September, you know, there will be more uh understanding, appreciation of the issues and possibly retain consultants, you know, to help us out on the various economic and social and other factors involved here. Uh Kevin, do you have something?
No, I didn't. I I don't really have anything I to add. I appreciate the opportunity to participate, to pit our, to participate in this process in this manner. And uh let's get on with it.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, ju- just for clarification, so there there's no meeting next time. At the at the next meeting, what's on the agenda is a report from the committee, but there's not going to be any kind of ordinances or anything like that on the next agenda. We'll discuss at that point. Where do you go from there?
I don't want to say yes or no. It's premature. I need opportunity to analyze the situation with city attorney. I did hear a request for as soon as possible an analysis of legal risks around an urgency action. So at a minimum, we will report somehow out to the council in at the beginning of September on that issue.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other comments? Any other thoughts? Uh I think, oh, we had, I'm sorry. Uh yes, did you? Yeah, I think we need you at the mic and oh, yeah, um yeah, I I, you know, something, let let's uh, yeah, if you can just submit it by public comment, that would be great. We do need to move on. Thanks. Okay, so um I think uh we're ready to move on to eight point two. Uh and that would be the um request that the city council revisit its parklet policy as it applies to the Left Bank Restaurant. Just one moment before I do that. So, you know, this has been a very long uh and and um, you know, very uh engaged process and and I just uh would like to thank once again everybody who came out and you've seen the the comments up here from Councilmember Harold and myself. So we really look forward to continuing this with you in September. And and please reach out to us by mail if you want in the meantime.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, just one one last thing. I just wanted to ask our city manager, based on this discussion, do you have or do you feel that you have sufficient direction to take us to the next step with the ad hoc committee and working with us in order to accomplish the goals that we've identified tonight?
I do. I also believe from our discussion, if the council took my direction, my suggested direction, uh you've empowered your ad hoc committee to make decisions to help us move as expeditiously as possible to bring something back. So um I expect we will do so. Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may make one suggestion, you may want to wait thirty seconds or a minute to allow folks who want to leave without disrupting the next item.
Okay, sure. So why don't we do that? Let's just take a thirty-second breather and get a glass of water. Go to the bathroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bit of a balancing act. Great. Okay, so let's, let's start, start up here with business item eight point two. And I guess if we could have a quick staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Council members, at your June 15 meeting, the council adopted policies and gave instruction to staff governing the concept of parklets, the use of public space primarily by restaurants in the downtown area to provide an outdoor dining option. The council established a policy parameters. The key ones are outlined in the staff report. The council also offered a grace period to a parkland that does not comply with these parameters. The one operated by the Left Bank to remove the parklet. That deadline has come and gone. The parklet's still standing. The general manager of the Left Bank has petitioned for an exemption from the policy. The council decided to put this on the agenda at its last meeting. And so we've brought it to you for you to discuss. And it's been agendized in a way where you certainly have within your power, the option to to exempt this parkland if you so desire, or to make other decisions that are outlined in the staff report. With that, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you, city manager. So I guess we're all aware of the time and you know, we have discussed this issue a lot. So I thought I would just bring it back to the council and you know, if we can just be succinct in what what our thoughts are on what to do next. Does remember way.
Well, I think the general manager of the Left Bank who has been asking for these extensions, he's agreed to remove it. He's asked for several extensions and I I think we've given him several extensions. And he has agreed also to to look for the future, maybe to reinitiate, re-initiate a different design on Magnolia Avenue. So I think that lines have passed and I think we have an alternative of expecting it to be done by the end of the month or a stating it into our, having our own public works department do it and bill him or build a business. I don't see if we have too many, too many other choices.
Sorry, just secondary question for the council, which is whether you're going to allow use of the parklet in the time between now and whatever extension you may grant.
I just, I'm, I was moved by the comment. I wasn't here at the June 15 meeting, but I was moved by the comments of the owner of the Blue Rock apartment complex and the Lark apartment complexes and partial business owner of the Left Bank that it's very disruptive to his tenants and many of his long term tenants have moved. And so I mean, I think as public policymakers, we have to balance the interests of of the competing interests of those two entities. And he's already put forward that it's been very disruptive to his business and his tenants. And I think we have to honor that too. So I think the sooner the better.
Thank you.
And he reiterated that in the letter today to me that I forwarded to the city clerk to go to all of us. Just.
So just, just to, if I could, just to clarify, you're not, it's supportive of an extension?
No.
Okay. Because neither am I.
Okay, so just to understand, council member way, you were saying to allow it to stand until the end of August, at which point public works could take it down, but not to allow any use from this day forward. That's, that's, is that summing that up?
Well, it looks like from his letter, he doesn't have a timeframe that is quicker than the end of the month. Take it down unless we do it. The question is, do we allow it to be used because it is still could be considered a nuisance to the resident, it still is a nuisance to the residents who live above the parkland. So I don't have an answer to that one.
Um. Okay, just, just trying to be sure. And then
What's your opinion on that?
Yeah, Scott.
My understanding is the owner or the manager is trying to take it down, that they wouldn't be able to take it down till, I think he said, September 1st or so. He had a certain, certain amount of money that he got quoted to take it down. He said, if the city could do it cheaper, they could take it down tomorrow. Otherwise, he's asking the city just to give him until September 1st. Because the person who designed it would be able to take it down and they could do it cheaper than than somebody else. I don't think they need to use it. I I'm kind of indifferent on that. You know, we've, you know, I would go along with the city council's feeling on that. I think I would be in favor of giving him until September 1st again, unless public works can do it cheaper. And I'll let the public works deal directly with the the tenant on that and they can, they can figure that out.
I spoke to Mr. Skinner, your public works director earlier today. He told me it would not be cheaper than the $3,000 number that the Left Bank general manager threw out for us to take it down. I do think if you're going to grant this extension, it should be conditioned upon the Left Bank signing a permit resuming its liability for being present in our public right of way. Otherwise, we should tear it down just on those grounds that we currently have a structure in our public right of way.
All right, so I I would be in favor of
Could you just restate what you just said so we could have
I think we would, we, I actually sort of just telling you what I would do. I mean, I'm going to put as a condition if you do an extension that that the Left Bank will need to take back liability for the presence of the structure in the public right of way. The permits expired and we've issued a notice that we're going to tear it down. So essentially by doing so, we've informed him that on August 8, we're going to take it down.
Correct.
Because we're essentially assuming back our liability for our public right of way. So he needs to, the the restaurant would need to take the liability again, which they held when they had a valid permit.
And would that require an additional permitting process?
Of sorts.
Yeah.
We can do that. We won't charge. We just want it signed so we're covered if you get, if you want to give an extension.
And that extension would be to the end of September. Or whatever.
September 1st.
September 1st.
Your staff's prepared to take it down.
Yeah, right. My preference would be to go ahead and do, yeah, my preference would be to go ahead and act as we have already previously decided. But I will leave it to my colleagues here to join with our
You said you're in a position to take it down and charge the costs.
Yes.
But that'll be more than $3,000.
It'll be whatever it costs.
Okay.
Did, do we have an estimate of what we're talking about?
I think Mr. Skinner told me anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000. Is that correct? Am I seeing a head nod back there? Yes. So there you go. It'll all depend on the logistics and timing, but that's your
All right. So so I'm going to make a motion then that we extend the time to take it down until September 1st. That he's now permitted to use it during that period of time. And that a condition of extending it to September 1st is that he signs whatever paperwork is required by staff for him to reassume liability during the period of time while while the structure is still there.
Yeah, that sounds like a fair summary to everybody.
And what's the penalty for not doing that?
For
You know, what?
Well, if if
We have an existing notice to the restaurant and in the absence of compliance with the
We'll take it down and charge.
Okay, so there is that we can initiate a takedown with a charge associated with it.
That's what we stipulated in the notice will occur on or after August 8.
Okay, so you want to extend it to August 30?
Sure.
Without use.
What was the date that they gave?
September 1st.
September 1st.
Oh, okay.
I think you want to invite speaker.
Yeah, sorry. I think we would open this up for public comment. So yes, go ahead. If you can just come up to the mic.
Sure. So yeah, our facilities manager did a lot of research and we couldn't find anybody that would do it before, like the beginning of November. So Frank was asking till at least the middle of September so we could try to expedite that process. And we're happy to sign whatever permit we need to sign to assume liability. That's fine. I guess my only question is if it's not in use, it will need to be probably boarded up. It would be more of an eyesore. I just want everybody to be aware of that if we're not using it. We kind of, we have to block it off our own liability and risk, right?
Have you been using it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there's one point I don't understand. So we're talking about September 1st and you're saying September 15?
Yes, Frank was asking till the middle of September if that's possible. If not, we will do our best to expedite the process. It's just based on the research that we've done so far. That was the earliest timeline we could get.
Okay.
Wouldn't it just take a couple of construction people with a hammer and a? Yeah, I mean, but we would like to get a legitimate contractor to do it versus just hiring somebody off the street with a hammer. I I hear what you're saying. I just, I mean, this is, we've had how many council meetings about this particular structure? I know. I mean, it's been, and it feels like it's a shifting game of, you know, what's under the next cup. So I just I'm just, I think we need to decide once and for all because yeah, although I adore Frank, it's always going to be one more step forward than he wants to take forward. And and I think the community is expecting that we make a decision once and for all. Sure.
So thank you for the public comment. So we did have a motion and it's a little bit convoluted, but any more public comment? Because I'd like to see if we have a second and then vote. So any other public comments? Looks like not, nothing online, Shannon. We're good. So Scott has made a motion with three different conditions. I think we all
Let me, let me rephrase it. Let me put it out there. Does anybody have any other comments or thoughts that they would prefer other than that motion?
So you said September 1
I
and assume liability.
In, in response to what I have just heard, I would amend that to September 15. Given the public comment with a date that if it's not down by September 15, staff would take it down and charge whatever staff is going to charge at that point with the other conditions that I previously mentioned.
What's special about September 15?
I think that's the date they requested. So that's a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, so let's do a roll call.
Yeah, let me just ask staff, is a motion clear?
I understand a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. All right. That was faster than the first one. So let's see how eight point three goes. Thank you all for your patience and staff especially.
We'll see Frank tomorrow.
Okay, so so the next item and council member way will need to leave in 15 minutes. So I really hope we can get through this rather quickly is the next business item eight point three is to request for a waiver of processing fees for a home key housing project at 1251 South Aliso Drive. If we could have a staff report, please.
1251 South Aliso Drive to 43 permanent supportive housing units for individuals who are experiencing homelessness. The city manager presented the site in May 4 and recommended approval of the waiver as soon as the city's development dropped the ad with the council continued to drive. The project is financially feasible for physical community service and grants, including a home key grant from the Health Department Housing and Community Development, and grants from the County of Marin and ongoing financial assistance. The housing element has several community policies that indicate the city will partner with other jurisdictions and nonprofits to address the city's housing needs. Provides housing for low income and those experiencing homelessness and waived fees to facilitate low income housing development. Including programs and policies with the staff report. Leaving building for a piece for this project implies within progress the programs of the city that the city has in general plan housing elements and the city's housing goals. The current housing element plans for development of 100 and 120 units of low and varied low income housing by 2023. The city has essentially already planned to take on public services necessary for 107 units of affordable housing. Since 2014, the city has approved the 12 fee restricted voting from units with the Rose Lane project and 14 accessory units that staff up to 20 will be affordable. The South Aliso project adds additional 44 units to be affordable housing in the area of Larkspur, taking us more than halfway to the city's current housing goals. Without the project, the city would fall short of meeting its current regional housing need allocation. As a bonus, the city is also allowed to count these 44 units towards the 979 housing units the city is currently trying to work in the new housing element. 459 of those units must be affordable to the house. The city has received eight emails, eight emails in opposition to the request. There are consequences for cities committed to follow us housing elements programs and there's a new state housing probability unit that has 25 staff. And they give all jurisdictions accountable for leaving their, or not leaving their housing home maintenance. I can't say that people who act the same way will be aware that there is a possibility that
Thank you, Lisa. And by the way, I've seen you've been here since the beginning of the meeting and I wanted to thank you. And I just realized actually every part of this meeting is about you too. I mean, that is housing, housing, housing and parkland. So super thank you for being here, but um
Yeah, I also just want to make sure the council is aware that your last, the last time we brought this, you had questions that we couldn't answer that really should where the county staff was better equipped to respond to. County staff is present on the online in the online room. So when you get to that point, I think they're prepared to speak to you and answer any questions you have about about
Okay, great, great. Good to know we have that resource. So council, any, any thoughts, any discussion on this matter?
I'm prepared to make the motion when we get to that point.
Okay, thank you, council member here.
Thanks for the presentation. As you know, I sit on the CAG, the Community Advisory Group. And I'm in the Subcommittee of Public Safety. So there's a lot of work yet to be done about this project. There's a lot of things that need to be brought forward through contracts and all with the county and with ECS. I think philosophically, as a, as policymakers in Larkspur, we need to support all levels of housing. This is a project that is unique, hasn't appeared in our community before. It's going to take a lot of effort for for us to engage with success on this. But it's also recognized in our housing element, how important it is for us to support a diversity of housing inventory. And this is an opportunity to provide very low income housing, the most, the hardest ones to develop in Marin County, frankly. I was ambivalent at first because I think it's an expensive project. There's parts of it we have control over and other parts that we don't have control over. But this we have control over. And I really think we need to make sure that we adopt a policy that will allow us to meet our regional housing goals and not be subject to the potential punishments from the state that may come down. And this will meet a significant part of our very low income requirement. And that's an important thing for the rest of our community. So And that's an important thing for the rest of our community. So I support it. I don't think there's going to be one more bite at the apple, but I've, I've heard that and I, I think we need to be wary that we'll be asked for more money, but we have to be alert to that. But I, I support it because I think we need to continue to support this project.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember.
While I share your support of this project, my concern is that there are going to be many more costs to the city of Larkspur that are not being addressed that these funds may be used for. And in a perfect world, I, I have been hoping that the city would be working more closely with the county to discuss these particular concerns, whether they're safety concerns, whether, you know, we're going to have to hire additional officers, whether we're going to have to have additional, you know, city staff, additional costs related to this project that because even though it's a county project, it's in Larkspur, it's going to fall on us to pick up the tab of any of these unanticipated consequences of this project. And I don't feel like those have been at yet, that those have adequately been addressed. And I am hoping, or I was hoping that by delaying the contribution of this money that would signal to the county, hey, maybe we should work more closely with the city, figure out what their concerns are, see if we can address them and you know, if, if we need to put money aside for certain things that the city feels is important, maybe we should take them seriously and put that money aside. I still don't feel that that's happened and, and maybe your experience is different. Okay, so if, and Catherine, I know we're kind of in the thick of it with this project. If you feel it, it has happened enough that we can let go of these, you know, this is basically the last leverage that we have. You know, that a, you know, we, we, we need a voice at the table, you know, about these concerns. Otherwise we don't release this money. If you feel we no longer need that, that leverage, I, I would, would follow you, but that's, that my concern is that once we release this, there's actually no reason for them to involve us in any way.
No, I don't, I, I mean, I've attended all of the CAG meetings and all the public safety ones with the exception of one and there's a lot of work that's still needs to be done, but I, we have a very proactive group of residents and community volunteers who are sitting on that group and I think their oversight is, has shown itself that they are tenaciously following this project. So I, I don't think this is going to make a difference in leverage on that project. I understand your concern that we may have additional costs that may be public safety related, et cetera, but that's, that data isn't out there yet. And we need to continue to hold this project accountable for that. But I think, I feel like they've, they're, they've gotten a handle on that in a way that makes me more comfortable.
And absolutely, just to follow up, so in the future, let's say we, you know, release this money and we waive the fees and then six months from now, whatever it is, it is determined that, hey, you know what? We're going to need to hire you know, security or we have to have some other staffing, some other issues that fall on Larkspur. Is it your impression that the county or ECS is going to say, oh, don't worry, we got a $10 million grant. We're going to take care of that.
Well, ECS has said they're responsible for it and the county has said they're the backup plan.
Okay. I, I mean, if.
That's what I understand it to be that, that, I mean, this is our project. So.
I understand, but it's in our backyard is the problem. So, so at the end of the day, if they don't do what they say they're going to do, we have to do it because it's our residents who are going to suffer. So at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're the ones holding the bag, you know, if they don't come through. So my concern is if they don't follow through, that's on us. And the only thing that we have to either, to, to either encourage them to follow through is this money that we're withholding or, or money that we could then use later to do what needs to be done. And once we let go of that, I feel like we're just saying, all right, we trust you. And that's, that makes me a little uncomfortable.
You want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that we didn't really clarify as well as we could have, but based on comment, written public comment and then Councilmember Candell's comments, I'd encourage the council to look at attachment one, which is a breakdown of the fees. A lot of these fees are either offset for our costs and those are in the general fund, so staff time. But the bulk of these are fees to mitigate impacts and offset third party charges. So we wouldn't, you couldn't redirect that money. So for example, one of the largest charges is the construction road impact fee. So you can't take that money and spend it on anything you want because you collected that fee because there's impacts from construction vehicles being on the streets. So it needs to be spent on the streets. So just to make sure we, we don't, I don't want people to get the wrong impression that this is money that could necessarily be spent on police, for example.
Right. If we're, if we use it for the money in the streets and we don't have that money and we end up using general fund money on our streets, then that general fund money that we would have used in the streets can now be used for, for police or whatever, whatever it is that we needed for. Is that not accurate?
I think that this, that point applies more to the fees on this list that are offsetting staff time than it does to the fee for road impact, the fee for technology. Those are fees that you really, we don't draw from the general fund to deal with those costs right now. So it wouldn't be the same type of shift that you're talking about. So I, I don't want to diminish the point you're making. I just think we'd have to dive into the minutia of what we're going to be moving around and not measure.
So, so let me interrupt briefly. Councilmember Way, I think you have a time constraint and we have two public comments and we had a motion or someone prepared.
I was prepared to make a motion.
Do you have five minutes or do you have to leave now?
We can do this in 30 seconds.
Can I, can I vote in five, five?
Yes, you can, you can. So, so we'll excuse you and then, and then we'll probably with public comment and discussion in five or 10 minutes we'll vote. So that, that should give you enough time to, to get back on. Okay. So thank you for, for, for coming. Okay. So, um, we, I think we're done here. I had a quick comment, but I think I want to go to public comment first. If that's okay. Um, I see three hands raised. Shannon.
The first public comment will be from Lily Thomas.
Okay, welcome, Lily.
Mr. Vice, before Lily speaks, she represents the county. You may want to extend her additional time if you have.
Yes. And actually that was my main request was, you know, to get, you know, since we have county staff, I'd really love to hear from you, you know, your input on this process. So I'm actually not going to time this. So just go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Lily Thomas with the, I'm the Deputy Director in the Community Development Agency. And I thank you for taking up this, this item. As was mentioned earlier, we see, the county sees this project as a partnership between the county, the city of Larkspur and ECS, who is the developer. We're pleased to have this opportunity to provide housing for some of the most vulnerable people in our community. And we appreciate the partnership with Larkspur and ECS, as mentioned earlier. I think that last time there were some questions on what the county has invested in the project and some questions about the use of these funds. So a few years ago, the Board of Supervisors changed their practice and decided to invest dollars both within cities and in unincorporated areas. Previously, our housing dollars were specifically for unincorporated. And when they took that action, they asked that when we invested our housing dollars within the city limits, that, that one of the asks would be that the city contribute through, either through a local housing trust, if they have it, some of the larger cities do, or through waiving of fees. And that shows that the city is supportive of the project and that they also have some investment in it. And so that has been the practice. As you may know, when we invested in the Homeward Bound project on King Street, we also asked for a fee waiver, which was granted to that. So it's my understanding that that has been the the practice in the past. And to address the question about the amount that the county is investing in capital, the capital end of the project, we have a little over $11 million. And that's a variety of funding from, both from the general fund, from our housing trust fund, as well as funds that are administered by the county through the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Program. So with those, through those combination, we have $11.4 million in capital invested in the project. And we've committed to $650,000 a year for the first 15 years to help fill the operating gap. So the county has invested in both the capital end of it to ensure that the renovation, it goes smoothly. Most of the funding, as you know, comes from the state through the home key, but they, those dollars are also matched by the, by the county. And then we're committed to ensuring that there's adequate funds for operating to provide the services for the residents and to ensure that there, you know, any impacts are addressed through that process. So those are the funds that we currently have committed. And we look forward to continuing our partnership. We're open to hearing any feedback that we have. We, you know, we, we hope that the committee has been a place where, where the city has been able to contribute and, and get their issues addressed. But if that's not happening, then we are absolutely open to having additional conversations to ensure that any impacts are addressed and that, you know, the city feels like it has a, a seat at the table, since that is always our intention. There, it sounded like Councilmembers Candell expressed some concerns about if the fees were waived, whether there would be future opportunities. And as we mentioned, what, we see this as a partnership going on into the future and there is no intentions that, you know, we burn bridges. And we're looking to have future opportunities with other cities in town. So we want to see this as a successful opportunity, as was King Street. So, you know, if there's any issues that come up in the future, we'll always have an open door and are available to address those and have additional conversations with the city about them. So if you have, with that, I think that that closes my comments, but, but please let me know if you have any questions that I can answer.
Great. Thank you, Lily. And thank you so much for, for joining us tonight. And Councilmember Harif or Candell, anything for her on, on this matter, on the county partnership with the city here?
I just want to thank her for participating in the meeting tonight and clarifying those issues. And, and, and thank the county for supporting this project because I've always thought it's a great project and I want to see it go forward.
Thank you. Shannon, could you check if Councilmember Way is able to dial in and get a spot on the screen? Cause we do have quorum, but I would very much like her participation. I think she's going to try to dial in by phone. If you can just check that, we'll go to the next public comment and hopefully we'll have her online soon. Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi.
James Holmes, Larkspur. The key question which we should get an answer to before making a decision is whether permitting costs are, for this project are already covered by the various grants that are financing the project. Because if the permitting costs are included in those other government grants, then if we waive our fees, what we are in essence doing is just making a, a, a contribution to Episcopal Homes, a private organization, which I don't think is appropriate. Or we are just offsetting costs that would otherwise be paid by other government agencies, the county or the state, which have far greater resources than we have. The amount at issue is very large, 275,000. I don't know what's more surprising, the amount which is vastly more than the 75,000 proposed to be waived in May, or that Larkspur is expected to, to eat all of it. I do think, I mean, we already see we have additional costs for rent control, so we need every dollar we can get. But the, the housing plan, unlike King Street, this of course is very controversial. But the housing plans fee waiver provisions that this huge contribution is said to satisfy are very clear that the purpose of a fee waiver is to make the project more feasible, feasible. But if there is no, but there is no evidence at all that this project won't be feasible if we don't waive fees and it's not contended that it's necessary. I don't think our fee waiver provisions contemplate waiver of costs already covered by other agencies rather than private builders on a slim margin. The fee waiver provisions don't contemplate a gift of Larkspur public funds. If you do want to make a gesture toward supporting the housing policies, then I suggest that the staff waive, that I, I suggest that only internal costs or a portion of them be waived and none of the out of pocket costs because of course we need every dollar we, we can get. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, James. I don't know if, if staff would like to address whether the fee waiver is being paid by any other grants or any other methods.
I have no idea how the county is funding the payment or ECS is funding the payments.
Okay. Lily, is that something you know? I don't know if she's still with us. Okay, great. And I see Councilmember Way has joined us. Welcome, Catherine. Yeah, we're still in public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Lily Thomas with the county again. And the question was whether the fees were necessary and, and what, how they would be used. Fee waivers were assumed in the pro formas and the budgets for this project since that was the precedent that we assumed. And so when ECS developed the budgets for the project, fee waivers were assumed based on the precedent of the, the King Street project.
Yeah, Lily, I guess the question is, rather than the projections, is there any other source of, of that revenue? I mean, is the, if, if there's a fee waiver, it's only coming from Larkspur. It's not that, that this is coming through any other grant. I think that was Mr. Holmes' question.
No, they, they, they were, there's, it's not, it's, they're, they're not supplanting any other source of funding.
Okay, okay. Appreciate it. Great. So maybe we can go to the next public comment. Welcome, Drew.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Drew Marte. I am a resident of Larkspur. My family and I live in the Creekside area for the last 10 years, plus years. And I have, I have some real deep concerns about the request for the waiver. Based off of the February 8th council meeting, there was about, to my count, there was about 62 individuals who spoke up. I had 77% against, 19% for, and 3% really weren't, didn't make a statement for whether they were for or against it. In terms of the Green Bay and Larkspur community, there were 30 residents who spoke up and only five, so less than 20% were for the project. This, this project is really being driven by the state and Marin County. As a resident of Larkspur, you know, we were essentially left out of this process. And, you know, I would hope that, you know, the safety of the community is the number one priority, which I know is being addressed right now on the, the council. Followed by, and maybe more importantly, being a fiduciary for the Larkspur residents' tax dollars. As Mr. Holmes had mentioned earlier, on April 26th, we were asked to waive about $73,000. Fast forward three months, we're now up to $275,000. That's north of 1% of the. That's north of one percent of the, you know, the twenty million dollar budget for Larkspur. So I don't think anybody really knows what's going to happen on a go-forward basis. So what we can do is look at other areas. What we've seen in Nevada, Sausalito, San Rafael, uh, and specifically, you know, maybe Sausalito, they, you know, they spent over a million and a half dollars over two years. And when they came back asking the county to help them out, the answer repeatedly was, we cannot help you. So my recommendation, and I hope the council would think about this, is to, let's see how this plan pans out over a certain time period. And if it works out, then let's go ahead, let's, let's waive or make a donation to ECS in the amount that they're asking for right now, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So, you know, I'm concerned, one of the things that we've seen in Nevada, Sausalito, San Rafael, is much as the council members have tried to do the right thing, there's been lawsuits in all of those areas from members who didn't feel that they were treated. So we have a twenty million dollar budget. We don't know what could happen on a go-forward basis. I think we should pause. We should also keep in mind that there's a lawsuit out there. Nobody knows what's going to happen with that lawsuit. I don't think we should be voting until that's settled. So those are my comments. Um, you know, if the, if the uh, council decides to go ahead, I think maybe a compromise was to, would be to waive the soft good, you know, dollars right now to show a good gesture. But in terms of the hard dollars, I do not think we're in a position right now as we're trying to balance or just barely balance the budget to be going ahead and waiving two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So those are my comments. Thanks for uh, everything.
Great, thank you, Drew. Uh, do we have any, any other public comment, Shannon? Uh, looks like we have one here in chambers. Uh, so would you like to come to Mike?
I'm Jeff Geisberger. I sent in a, a letter. It's amazing that there, you've got good people of the community here worried about housing, and we're debating this as well. It's a little bit ironic. But if you guys look through ECS' financials, they took three point three million in PPP funding, okay? That's a bonus for them. Now, and, and what they're worth, you guys got to look at what they're worth. ECS can afford to pay the two hundred and seventy-five thousand in permit fees. Um, the city of Larkspur, uh, no deeds, uh, will no doubt need to use revenue to um, cover some community safety. Um, when you look at this, you heard it in your report, who benefits from, um, from the city of Larkspur waiving two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of permits and fees? It's politicians and it's ECS, okay? It is not the residents of twelve fifty-one, okay? And that's, that's something you guys need to think about. Who loses? It's the city of Larkspur, it's the taxpayers, so that's all.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Okay. Looks like there's no more online public comments. Uh, doesn't look like there's anything in the chambers. Um, so yeah, let's bring it back, close public comment, bring it back to council. Looks like Cath, uh, Councilmember Way, you had your hand up?
Yes, I, I apologize for having to get out of there quickly, but, so I missed what Lili had to say. It, um, was there a mention of a deadline of when this, these funds were due?
Uh, no, she did not mention that, but I believe she's still online. If you, maybe, or if the city manager knows that answer.
It's a request, but I, my question is, I didn't see in the city, in the manager's report, if there was a deadline for uh, when these funds needed to be received.
So in order to keep the project moving, the applicant paid the fees, so there isn't a deadline, but um, yeah, I don't, that's, there isn't a deadline anymore, so.
Okay. Um, anything else, uh, Councilmember? Looks like you're on mute, but I, I think you're shaking your head. Okay, great, uh, yeah, Scott.
Councilmember. Uh, Elise, I, I, I have a question for you, um, which I'm still trying to wrap my head around. You mentioned something about are waiving the fees are somehow tied to us getting credit for the housing or somehow there's a penalty if we didn't waive these fees? Could you explain that again?
If, if we were to waive a portion of the fees, would that be following the program?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, looks like we might be ready to move the matter. I'm not sure if, if that is, uh, you're thinking of a motion. I know, uh, Councilmember Harrah wanted to.
I'm prepared to move, uh, adoption of Resolution sixty-three twenty-two.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Councilmember Way seconds, uh, can we get a roll call, please? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Uh, we'll note for the record, one no vote by Councilmember Candell, the motion passes.
Okay. All right, so uh, that moves us to item eight point four, uh, policy for the use of revenues generated by the Larkspur Disaster Preparedness and Essential Services Measure, Establishing the City Storm Drain Systems and Disaster Preparedness as a Priority Use of Funds. Uh, could we have a staff report, please? Great, thank you, Shannon. Um, any questions?
Well, no, I just, I just want to make a clarification, because I think I uh, used the wrong resolution number when I made my motion a minute ago.
Okay.
I think I should have.
I don't know, uh, Sky, is that something we need to correct and revote on, or, or was the intention clear enough?
Just checking the resolution number. Oh, I believe you, I did, I believe you did misspeak, but I think the intent was clear enough. And I think as long as the, the minutes reflect that the motion was to adopt, uh, Resolution thirty-two.
Okay.
Slash twenty-two.
Right, because I, I just was flipping through and I, I realized that I was ahead of myself.
But I think the intention was clear enough that it was to adopt the motion that was recommended.
Okay, as long as you're fine with that, that's fine with me.
Okay, great, so we won't need to vote on that again. Um, okay, so again, any questions of Shannon or? No, okay. Yeah, so I, I just appreciate what I think we're doing here is we're um, just summarizing the city's intention to use these funds for, you know, the uh, disaster preparedness as stated. And um, I guess this is uh, a motion if anybody wants to move and get, we'll get a second.
Motion.
Motion to pass the resolution.
Okay, do we have a second?
Happy to second.
Great, so Councilmember Candell and Harrah have moved and seconded.
Do we need public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do see two ra- raised hands. Um, so yes, let's turn it over to the public. Um, it looks like, uh, Laura, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm seeing nobody in the chambers. We have two participants virtually, so Laura, Laura will be the first up. Okay, thank you. This is Laura Apple. Um, this is the second time this subject has been brought up. And it's the second time it's been at the end of a very long meeting. Um, this one's even later than the one before. Um, and as you pointed out, this is, this proposed tax that's going on the November ballot is a gen, is a, a tax that will go into the general fund. It's not restricted to um, disaster preparedness or fixing the um, the sinkholes. And if um, there's a need to cover pension obligations or some of the other unanticipated obligations that Councilmember Candell brought up in the last discussion, it might have to go to that. You don't have control that this has to stay within the particular um, restrictions that you're discussing, because it's going to go in the general fund. It's also a forever tax. Now, at the last discussion, um, the city attorney tried to make light of that. And the organization I work with, the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, has done its own research on these forever taxes, the ones that say until ended by the taxpayers. And we came up with nothing, but I followed up with Sky, and he came up with one example. He found three examples of um, attempts to get rid of, of taxes that could be ended by the taxpayers, but only one was successful. So this is a forever tax, and you're asking us not only to trust Dan Schwartz and whoever came up with this idea, but you're asking us to trust people who haven't even been born yet, because thirty years from now, how many of us are going to get around? There are people not born yet who would still be spending this tax money. So I'm, I'm sure that I'm going to be opposing this tax. And I think you should be rethinking what you're doing with this tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for your comments. Uh, next public comment?
Uh, James Holmes, uh, I note that, that, that this resolution, unlike the um, Resolution Governing Measure B, which was fifty-seven dash seventeen, does not specify a percentage of the revenue which must be spent for the primary purposes, which in this case uh, is disaster preparedness and storm drains. The Measure B Resolution specified that not less than eighty percent of the revenue would go toward roads. So I think this resolution has less specificity than the Measure B Resolution, and I would encourage the council to insert the same kind of percentage into this resolution uh, regarding the primary purposes that was present in the original Measure B Resolution fifty-seven dash seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Uh, any other public comment? Okay, great. There's no one in the chamber, so I'll bring it back one more time to the council. Any uh, other thoughts or last thoughts, discussion uh, around this?
No, I think we have a motion on the table.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we uh, second and vote. I, I, I do appreciate the call and comments, and I, you know, spent a lot of time thinking about this. And um, I, I could invite the city manager to, to comment on this, but basically, it looks to me like we're trying to strengthen the uh, the use of this money for the stated purposes. So that's what's on the table tonight. As far as this being a forever tax, um, uh, maybe the city manager or, or city council can confirm, but at any time, even for people who are unborn, uh, if two members here on the council decide this is not doing what the Citizens Oversight Committee, which we will have, or us thinks it's doing, it can immediately put on the ballot for a vote. So I, I just wanted to confirm are those statements correct? Because I, you know, I, I do think we want to be fiscally responsible, but I, I want also to make sure that we're working with the correct information.
To speak to the latter point, there are essentially two paths for the voters to exercise their right to terminate the tax, should it be passed. One would be to petition the council directly, and the council could put it on the ballot, or they could go through the petition process circulating and, and collecting signatures. I should probably should have used a different word for the first part, they could request it, the council. I'd like to think that the voters are capable of identifying if they want to do that. And as I mentioned at the last council meeting, I, I feel quite confident that if the tax is no longer serving its purpose, the Citizens Oversight Committee will very loudly and very clearly tell the council that. Um, I did also want to emphasize, and we talked about this at your last meeting, the city actually has always taken its other sales tax, Measure B, which is Measure B now, as we tend to refer to it. And we put it in its own fund to be the ultimate level of transparency of where that money is and how it's being spent. And we would do the same here. Um, and so uh, it will always be very clear to the public, because once you set up a fund and that's where the money's going, you have to go through a process publicly to talk about moving the money out of the fund for use. And we've done that every year. That's why you heard Ms. O'Hare talking about it'll be done annually as part of your, your budgetary process, so. And then I did hear Mr. Holmes ask about a percentage. I do want to remind folks, maybe paying attention, the road program was unique. We had sort of a long-term vision and plan about how we would finance the roads. It worked well um, to, to be that specific. As we've talked about, the disaster preparedness is going to require annual adjustment to the climate, annual adjustment to the threats. And uh, we think this language encapsulates what you want to do, but also will give you the ability to respond to those demands each year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so if there are no more comments or, or questions, I think we have a motion and I think we need a second.
I think you have a second. I think I seconded.
We did, okay, great. So then, uh, roll call to uh, vote on eight point four, the policy for revenues generated. Yes.
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 Great, so that passes unanimously, and that concludes our business items. And now we're on to adjournment. So uh, if we have no further objections, I move to adjourn the meeting. And I guess I get to use this. Hey, okay, we are officially done at ten seventeen.